Space standing for a moment of silence.
All right, we're at the adoption of the agenda.
A move that we adopt the agenda as presented?
All right, in a second. All those in favor say aye. Oh, sorry, further discussion? Anyone? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. All right, presentations. Dr. Grimsley, School Board, or School Superintendent Report. Somebody was much taller than me. Good afternoon. We did it. We finished our school year in a pandemic. Yay. RCPS closed out the year on a high note with our in-person, indoor graduation ceremony on May 28th. Feedback from graduations so far has been extremely positive, and we would like to expend a special thank you to Ms. Smith, Ms. Donahue, Mr. Whitson, for attending the ceremony. It meant so much that you were able to celebrate this joyous occasion with us. So, thank you so much for being there. RCPS wrapped up the year with many of the celebrations and events we were unable to hold last year, including a beautiful senior prom and senior banquet, an alternate prom, bonfire, movie event, virtual baccalaureate, a senior picnic, RCVS Field Day, award ceremonies, and of course culminating with our graduation ceremonies for our preschoolers, kindergartners, seventh graders, and seniors. Seniors kept us all on our toes the final week of school with their class pranks, including a front lawn campout, dressing our headwaters, silhouettes, and diapers and swimwear, filling the portico with balloons, mannequins looking out from the ceiling, and even a small mobile petting zoo for the kids. The laughter and smiles witnessed by students and staff alike were heartwarming and a great way to end the year. We were able to also honor our retirees from the system during our celebrations. Retiring this year from RCPS are Phyllis Fraser, Nutrition Services for 16 years, Darlene Matheson, High School Teacher for 19 years, Jimmy Swindler, RCHS Principal, and 20 years of service to the district, Dave Roberts with 21 years, Lila Wolf with 30 years of service, Laney Vickers with 36 years of service, and Candy Lama and Sheila Smith, each having served the district for 41 years. These amazing individuals have certainly left quite a legacy at RCPS, and they will be sorely missed. Currently, summer school is underway. So far, we have about 130 students participating in summer school between both schools, both for skills remediation and credit recovery. Students participating in summer school also have the opportunity to go to Terrific Thursday. Remember Wonderful Wednesday, and then you've got the alliteration with Terrific Thursday, similar to this year's Wednesday program at Graves Mountain for fun-filled activities, and also a great incentive for attendance at summer school. Finally, I'll end with a spring sports update. JV softball completed their season last week, playing nine games in a record of four, four to five. The team consisted of eighth through 10th graders, and it's looking bright for that group. They competed well in Bull Run. Varsity softball finished the regular season and will compete in the region tournament starting June 15th. As of today, they are placed as the number one seed in the region. So, we will have final confirmation of the seeding at the end of this week, and if they indeed place a number one or two seed, that we will host the region semifinal on June 15th. JV baseball completed their season last week. The team consisted mostly of eighth graders and only three freshmen. No sophomores, but a bright future for rap baseball. They competed well in the Bull Run District as well with such a young team. Varsity baseball finished their regular season at eight and four, the best record in years for rap baseball. They were one game out of first place in Bull Run District. The region seedings are in very close race right now, and we'll have confirmation of placement at the end of this week. Baseball will also play on June 15th for the region semifinal and have the opportunity to host if they're in the number one or two seed. Varsity girls soccer began the season pretty well. We started at just 14 girls, but due to unforeseen circumstances, the team numbers fell below the safety threshold, so we were not able to finish, but they were able to capture a great win against Page County before we had to pull them out. Track and field finished their regular season, earning many accolades in the district with several top-three finishes in different events. Rachel Weghorst and Luke Ellis were both successful in winning the one-mile and two-mile race at the district meet. Track will travel to Franklin High School on Wednesday this week to the region meet, and we look forward to hearing great things from that. And I know tonight is the sports awards ceremony. I believe it's at 6:30 at the high school, but double-check me on that. As always, we appreciate all you do for our students and families, and we could not have had such a successful year without your support. So, thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Congratulations on your leadership this year.
Thank you.
Probably a year you won't forget.
Never.
And at the risk of taking away your opportunity to relax a little bit, I do have to ask, what is the start of school going to look like? What should we expect to see from a pandemic winding down standpoint?
Yes, great question. I get that asked a lot. So, hopefully, as normal as possible, the school calendar that the board did, the school board adopted, I think in the March meeting, does presume a five-day back-to-school, all-in-person instruction. Senate Bill 1303 also requires every school board to offer in-person instruction for all students. So, that is the plan right now. At the school board meeting tomorrow night, we will be discussing the team that was looking at other ways to incorporate some of the Wonderful Wednesday components we found to be most successful. It doesn't look like with the Senate Bill 1303 that the way that we had done it this year would work, because asynchronous distance learning instruction won't count as their in-person requirement for seat time hours. So, we'll have to modify that a little, but we have a whole lot of other ideas on how we can incorporate social emotional supports for students.
Thanks for all you did.
Absolutely. Thank you. I thought graduation was wonderful inside, and it wasn't hot. Everything went well. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Grimsley. Now, I'm happy to bring up Sean Polster, our new Emergency Services Management Coordinator. Thanks for that.
Hey, good afternoon. My name is Sean Polster. I am your Emergency Services Coordinator, Emergency Manager. I come with 30 years of fire and rescue experience, former law enforcement officer, just retired from the federal government, and a career paramedic. I come to the county to represent the residents and businesses with an open mind and look to do what's the best interest of the residents and the citizens who live here. So, I'll take any questions you have, but I'm excited to start last Tuesday and work with everybody here. So, thank you.
Any questions, comments?
I don't have any questions, but I wish you all the best, and thank you for joining us.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I think he stands out in a crowd.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, we have the folks from the library to discuss the renovation and expansion.
I can go up one notch.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chairman, and members of the board. Thank you for giving me the opportunity of presenting a presentation. We do have a presentation today. It'll be very brief and very quick. We're with Interus Design Architects. I'm Gil Insmeinger. I'm the President of Interus Design, and we're working with the library board on a space needs assessment for future planning for the library in Rappahannock County. Next slide. So, Interus Design is located in Richmond, Virginia. We're an architecture firm with a specialty in library projects. We've worked on over 20 library projects around Virginia. Our libraries are very unique and designed specifically to the communities they serve. We've worked in library communities that are very rural and agricultural, similar to Rappahannock County. Charles City County is one of our clients, and we've worked on urban libraries as well. They've ranged from a small renovation of a children's area to a large 53,000-square-foot library, or an 8,500-square-foot library, and everywhere in between. So, the purpose of our study is to define the space needs and program requirements for a library to best serve the residents of Rappahannock County. We're looking at the existing facilities. We're looking at space needs and many other factors, and the overall goal is to create library and library space and library services that can inspire, enrich, and empower the residents of Rappahannock County for the future. Next. Our process is one of discovery. We're meeting with people. We had several meetings last week, stakeholder meetings, staff meetings, public input meetings, to gather as much information as we can about the county. We're going to analyze that information and then prepare a space list, a list of square footages and requirements to best serve library services in the county, and then we'll come back and inform the community of our results when the study's complete. Excellent. We're looking at the county as a whole geographically. We're looking at the existing space, existing conditions, and we're also looking at various features about the culture, heritage, and history of the county as well, to see how it might inspire needs for library services. We're studying demographics, of course, the vital statistics of the county, to see how that may influence needs for library services. But as I said, most of all, we're trying to hear from the community through our community input meetings. We are also conducting a community survey that's issued online and in hard copy. There's about 30 different questions to respond to, to give your input about what you think the needs of library services are. I think we have over 376 responses to that survey so far as of today. So, real quickly, I'd like to give a quick presentation of what modern library services are. That card catalog is what many people might think of library services from 50 years ago, but modern libraries are more about people. Next slide. It's more about people and connections between people. It's connecting people to books and literature, of course, but it's connecting people to all sorts of materials and resources, technology, art, entertainment, culture, and the library serves it as that facility that can provide those connections. It becomes a community center for all types of events and activities with which the library can host for the community. Next. It also incorporates a lot of collaborative spaces. Libraries today have a lot more meeting spaces, interactive activity rooms, and small group meeting rooms and large group meeting rooms, which libraries of the past did not accommodate. It's also a community living room. It's a place to get away and relax. If you want to go and read a book, just relax and hang out. That's the place to go. The library is the one free place in our society where everyone can go. You don't have to belong to an organization. You don't have to be wealthy. It's available to everyone. It's a very social place. Libraries aren't the place where you're shushed, where you go in. They're very active and interactive spaces. We design libraries so that they can accommodate those very active spaces, but you also have quiet spaces in the library as well for reading and focused activities. Of course, library has collections, have books, and other types of media for checking out, but they're housed in a very different way. They're housed for easy browsing, display, and a more retail bookstore model. And the way that we access materials in the library is different. With everyone's busy lives today, often you need much more convenience, whether it's a drive-up book drop or return. Maybe it's a book locker, where you check out a book after hours. It's deposited in the locker, and you can pick up after you get off work when the library's not open. Self-check makes it easy to run in, grab your book, check it out, and go. If there's a line at the circulation desk, you can access your material. So, the way that we access those collections is very different. As I mentioned, collaboration is a big thing in libraries. To connect the people to all of those types of resources, you need space, rooms, to allow for that collaborative activity. Large group meeting rooms can host a variety of different activities, community meetings, lectures from the library, a small jazz quartet. Any of those activities can occur in the library in a variety of different functions. So, large group meeting space is important. But also, small group meeting space is important. We heard from several of the school groups this past week, they don't really have a place to go and meet and study and work on projects together. So, having small group meeting rooms for kids to work together in the library, or maybe it's a group of seniors who want to get together and have a civic group meeting, or a Board of Trustees meeting for one of their organizations. So, we need to have those small group meeting rooms as well. Those types of collaboration space could be geared to children's activity, educational opportunities for children, such as this imagination station. Maybe it's a STEAM lab that encourages science, technology, engineering, arts, or math programs for teens, or maybe it's even a business center that allows for adults who are starting a business out of their house. Maybe they don't have access to all of the software and technology at home, or maybe they don't want to meet with a client at home. Maybe the library's the place that they can do that through a business lounge. And libraries need to be compatible for all ages. Libraries should be designed with colorful, bright children's area that have the forms and materials and furnishings that are appropriate for children's activities, that give them their space. And then they also need to appropriate to teens. Teens need a place to go in a library. Currently, the library has one small corner with two bookshelves and a chair in the corner. So, the teens in the county, per the meetings we had last week with them, don't feel like they have a place to go in the library, but also they don't necessarily feel like they have anywhere else to go in the county. So, providing a designated specially-designed teen area in the library might encourage teens to participate more in the library and maybe in the community. And of course, you need those quiet spaces. Maybe it's a quiet reading room, or an area to just sit and read the paper in the library, or these small group meeting rooms. Maybe it's a cafe environment where you can sit and get a cup of coffee and read your materials. Of course, technology is important in libraries and in the world. We can't do anything today without technology. So, the library becomes a place to access that technology for those that may not have access to it at home. We understand broadband is a problem in the county. Not everybody has an internet access. So, that being available at the library is very important. We try to encourage all types of activities, smart boards, interactive boards, multimedia boards. And content creation is something that can be a part of a library. As I mentioned, that science, technology, engineering, arts, and math programs can be accommodated in flexible-use activity rooms, 3D printers in a maker space, or maybe it's a multimedia studio where you can produce sound or video. We heard from students that they're required in their projects to produce videos and presentations as part of their school. If the library were able to provide that as resources, they could do it at the library. And technology doesn't just stop at the user side or the public side. There are ways to integrate technology into the library that can make it easier for staff to do their work and allow them to be out in the library, providing programs and services directly to the patrons. So, that's a little bit of a snapshot of what we've been discussing and presenting to various different public groups over the past week. We're going to take a lot of this information, analyze it, and then come back in a few weeks and make some recommendations for what would be needed for library services in the county. Any questions?
Questions?
Oh, so you apparently have had a lot of experiences in a lot of different libraries. Is it possible for a public library to order books and actually sell it to the customers, to the members?
No, as a public library service, the books are free, so that's part...
I know they're free to borrow, but is it, do you know of a library that could actually order a book and the people could purchase the book? Because there's no bookstores around.
Yeah, usually that's done through a Friends of a Library function. I believe the county does have a Friends of a Library program, so I believe they would be the entity organization to purchase and then resell, but as a public library, they don't resell with them.
Right. Well, you mentioned a place to get a cup of coffee. Are they going to sell coffee or not?
Often, it's a vending machine service, but yes, it would be a cup of coffee.
Thanks.
Any other questions, comments?
I had the pleasure of participating in two of your community sessions, and I thought you did a really good job of eliciting comments on what people would like to see in a new or revamped library. And in that process, you mentioned, again, today, Charles City County, I believe, which my understanding is that the population is similar to Rappahannock County.
About 7,200.
Right. Could you just briefly explain the process there, how long the planning took, what that library looks like, how big it is, just general parameters? And I don't know if it's a fair comparison, but just to kind of benchmark what you, similar projects you've done in similar places.
Sure. Libraries typically take a fair amount of time to create and get built from start to finish. There's a group that organizes to express the need for a new library or expanded library, which is, I think, kind of where we are at this point in the process. Then, it's a part of informing the public, understanding the public, gathering the needs from the public, developing that program, and then deciding on how much space. Once the space is decided on, you determine how to get it built. Can the existing library be renovated? Can it accommodate? Can the site accommodate? Going through fairly extensive budget exercises to determine how much it would cost, and then going through the process of getting it built. It can take as much as, you know, five years typically from start to finish. Charles City County specifically went through various ups and downs in their process to come to the final solution. That project ultimately went to a referendum where the public petitioned on a ballot to have a library built and moved forward with the project after that was ratified or approved through the election process. And then, from that point on, it was a fairly quick process of getting the designing construction completed.
And were they, was it a library renovation of an existing building, or a new library?
No, it was a new library. Charles City County was the only locality in the state that did not have a library. They were operating a small library space that was an unfinished courtroom in their newer courthouse, but they didn't have a designated library. So, it was a new building. It turned out finally in the end to be 8,500 square feet. Started out bigger than that and was cut back for budget reasons. I would say, though, that they cut back on space, but now regret that they don't have more space. They have a relatively small community room that's about the size of your existing Rappahannock County Library meeting room, and they need one that's about twice that size, and they wish they had built it larger.
And what is the approximate square footage of our existing facility in terms of usable space? I understand there's a basement that's...
It's around 5,000 square feet.
5,000 usable space, 5,000 square feet, okay.
And just if I can elaborate a little bit, the size of libraries today, in order to accommodate those collaborative spaces, the STEAM labs, the multimedia spaces, which weren't in traditional libraries, they need more space. Typically, we believe that a library to accommodate all of those functions and have a good-sized meeting room, let's say 80 to 100-person meeting room, really needs to be in that more like 12,000 to 16,000 square foot range to accommodate that. Thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you very much. All right, we're moving into the public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak, please raise your hand. I'm going to try to limit this to five minutes each, and if you'll let us know your district when you come up, that would be great. Yes, ma'am.
I am Judy DeSarno from the Hampton District and on the Board of Trustees of the library and Chair of the Expansion/Renovation Committee. First of all, I want to thank my supervisor, Kier Whitson, who came to the public meeting. He came to some other in his official capacity, because I think it's so important to hear the comments. And the public meeting was so positive. I just want to, you're going to get to hear all the results, but I have really, it's been an education for me. The people who have agreed the most on what we need, and has surprised me, are the teens and the senior citizens. They both had the same kinds of needs. The teens, I want to congratulate the school system, were incredibly articulate about what they needed, both in terms of they don't have any place to go, but really in terms of what would be helpful to them with their education and their ability to collaborate on studying. And interestingly, the seniors were in very well the same way. So, I know that we have had actually a good response to the survey. I'm going to put some back here if it's okay, but you can simply go on your computer to the Rappahannock Public Library. It's right there. It's easier to compile for the firm if it's done electronically. And it's really been interesting. We have talked to six different groups, and we've had an open meeting, and I'm not counting talking to the staff. I also invite everyone here, but particularly the Board of Supervisors, if you haven't been in the library recently, going through the plant, you see she's pretty rundown at the heels now, from everything to staff space to the kinds of things that obviously the public wouldn't comment on, although we've had one comment on the bathrooms. But again, I want to thank Kier Whitson, but all of you for listening, and I know that the architect will be reaching out to you to do a phone interview individually about your thoughts. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm sorry, point of information. I did want to just mention, that reminded me when you mentioned the survey, Mr. Sarno. One of my constituents was wondering if there could be an option added to the survey for no change needed. They didn't feel like there was a way to identify that they believed that there was no change required.
There is. At the very end of the survey, they ask for other comments, and that would be appropriate.
Don't you think that that could be something that could be presented upfront for people that don't want to go through all those things?
Well, the survey is done. I mean, the survey is done and out there. At this point, it would probably be too late, but you might tell them, if they've already done it, they could go back in and simply put that in. There's place for comments all through it.
Right.
And so, if there was an option that you wanted that wasn't there like that, you could have, you can simply put it in.
Yeah, a lot of people aren't going to go through all those screens to say, "No change required," or, you know, "No to look for that at the end."
Well, I understand that. All I'm saying is, at the beginning, they are asked questions like, "Do you have a library card? When were you last in the library?" So, obviously, that's important information for us. If someone has never been in the library, doesn't use it, to say, "No change," it's not that their opinion would be discounted, but it does give some context to the answer. It's not sorted that way, but as I say, after many of the questions, you could say, "No change, no change."
Thank you, Mr. Sarno.
Thank you. Anyone else's public comment? Yes, sir, Mr. Williams? Oh, you don't, okay. You can go next.
I'm Roy Ellis from the Stonewall Hawthorne District.
You should be able to just tilt the microphone back.
I'm Roy Ellis from Stonewall Hawthorne District. Some of the folks in my district feel the Board of Supervisors should revisit the renaming of the LFCC. The renaming of LFCC is not a one-time thing and needs to be viewed in a much broader perspective. This country is being run by a communistic regime as constant, while our president in exile sits it out in Florida. The regime is using communist tactics to route the existing government with the intent to deliver us to a great reset, which has yet to be defined. With seeming impunity, they violate and ignore the Constitution and successive laws that bind the country together. For the Marxists to succeed, religion, freedom of speech, culture, and tradition must be destroyed. Disruption and chaos must reign. This calls for instilling fear in people, pitting races against each other, financial collapse of the monetary system, and implementing other tactics that have been used in communist overthrows throughout history. Examples of ongoing tactics that have achieved some level of success: revisionist history, heavy indoctrination of young people, unlawful attempts to remove a sitting president, humongous corruption and pilfering of taxpayer funds, fraudulent elections, weaponizing media, censoring opposition to China virus, and so on. Statues and monuments have been torn down. Places bearing the name of a founder or of a Confederate officer are under pressure to be renamed, Lake Pelham, for example. Some tactics being implemented give Karl Marx a bad name. Some words in the age-old English language are being redefined, new ones being invented like woke-ism. Use of some personal pronouns like he, she, it, and they is not allowed. Critical race theory will label you as a racist if you say you are not a racist. After thousands of years of mankind, there's a certain phobia to create people of multiple genders beyond the plain vanilla, male, and female versions. Public restroom modification is booming business, as the different genders can now use a common bathroom. Males can now compete in female sports, beauty contests, and so on. Marxism doesn't fully describe such actions, so I've invented a new word to define such actions: imbecilism. Imbecilism, the practice of being an imbecile. Renaming the LFCC is a small part of this Marxist effort. Renaming the LFCC is a small part of this Marxist effort and should be viewed in that context. I know of no one in Stonewall Hawthorne, our district, will have to be renamed, who is on board with this attempt to force a communist-style government on this country. People in their communities respect each other, respect our founders, the Constitution, and do not want any facets of Marxism or council culture taking place in Rappahannock County. A Marxist-leaning LFCC board will gladly receive letters of opposition, even thank you for your interest. If left in place, the person that the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors appointed to the LFCC board will have further opportunities to vote on some of the aforementioned tactics.
Thank you. Mr. Williams?
Good evening, everyone. Y'all know me, Kevin Williams, Wakefield District, but I'm here as President of the Rappahannock Fire and Rescue Association. All y'all have received two letters this past week that came from the last association's meeting in regards to, one of them was the radio system, current issues we're still having and everything. On behalf of the association, I've been asked to read this letter and then go into some points that I have. I think everyone received the letter from Art via email, and then you should have received a signed copy, signed by Vice President Nick, due to, he was running the meeting that night. At Rappahannock County Volunteer Fire and Rescue Association's meeting in May, it was brought to the attention of the association that the county was supposed to have conducted tests of the Harris radio system and the paging system. It was pointed out at the meeting that the county reported they had found no issues with either the radio system nor the paging system. In actual reality, that is not the case, as issues have been reported by members of each fire and rescue company in the counties. Amosville Company Three has reported numerous issues with poor reception or no reception of calls and radio transmissions received by their pagers. Chester Gap Company Nine has reported numerous cases where their pagers have failed to receive calls and transmissions to the point where the previously installed repeater in Chester Gap has had no, had to be in operation in order to receive and transmit radio messages and to receive pager messages and alert tones. The two Sperryville companies, Washington, Flin Hill, and Causin, have all reported issues with reception and radio transmissions on radios and pagers in the county. The association would like to know in writing what the actual results of this radio and pager test were, or had they been conducted. There are still apparently a number of issues going on with the respective company pagers and radios which need to be addressed and corrected. If the county has concluded the issue and has been resolved, the association would like to know in writing how the issues have been resolved and why the radio and paging system are still having problems with reception and transmission. It was pointed out at the association meeting in May that Falkir County is also experiencing serious deficiencies with their Harris company system, that a portal has been created there to log and document the deficiencies because of the pervasive transmissions and reception issues that Falkir County has been experiencing. It was also reported that eight forty-three PM on the evening of Tuesday, May twenty-sixth, there was a Harris radio outage throughout Falkir, Rappahannock, Call Pepper Counties, and that the only means of communication of emergency calls was through the I am Responding Communications Programs, which only works if you have great cell service, and we don't have that many cell towers, so you can imagine what some of our volunteers are going through with that. Emergency responders and companies with Call Pepper and Rappahannock Dispatch Systems. We had not been advised what the cause of the outage was, but it has since been corrected. The association would greatly appreciate a written response from the county regarding the testing of the pagers and radio systems and why and how the county has determined that the issues have been resolved. We did get a response just the other day, all y'all were on that email as well from the county. That's the first response that we've gotten to. Four letters that the association has sent over the past couple of months, starting with the part-time person, all the way down to the E nine-one coordinator, radio issues and everything. So this is the first, we were glad to see a response, but some of the others will talk about the response that we received. I shared that with my executive committee and the chiefs. One thing I like to do, because it's also, we're finding out that evidently the board sometimes thinks the association is just blowing steam when we're reporting some of these issues and we're, we're having issues. We're not just blowing steam. We're your volunteers out here helping save all these taxpayers in this room right here a lot of money. And we're trying our best, and we're the users, we're the end users of this radio system and the paging system. So just to show you that we're not just blowing steam, I'd like to show you, for you to listen to a page that is on the best day for the north end of the county, for us to hear what's going on. And then the second one will be me standing in Washington Fire Department's parking lot, so you'll see the difference.
Message one, message two, message three, message four, message five, message six, message seven, message eight, message nine.
Message one, first you, AMIS four, AMIS seven, AMIS nine, assistance with raised patrol, intersection, question, back to the water tank, city area, twenty-seven, eleven seventeen.
Message eleven.
This is standing in Washington parking lot this night.
And you're having four, three, and nine. Rush four and nine. We have tanker four, for outside fire.
So you can see, we're not just blowing steam. We're, Amosville's having the same issues, north end of the county's having the same issues with the radio systems. And there are some others here behind me that will get up and speak as well for the other departments that are having the, the same issues. As you can see on that first one, that's what we've had since this pager system's been put in place, and it's starting to get very frustrating. Mr. Curry is probably working hard as he can with the Harris and everything, but I think it's time where we need to really start ramping up, because just a couple, less than a month ago, like they said in the letter, we had a structured fire in Chester Gap, and that one member's pager alerted. Luckily, the chief got it across his phone on I am Responding, called back dispatch, told them that they needed to reset the tones again, and called Warren County to set it off so our members can hear it. So this is really affecting not only us, but it's affecting the community, and we've put a lot of money out for this system, and we need to be either holding Harris accountable or somebody needs to be giving us answers. We do know that there was supposed to have been a test done, which we talked about at the association when Mr. Curry sent his email, saying it would be a sound, push that across it. We don't know if that's happened yet or not, or what's going on, but we need to get this corrected as soon as possible, because I hate for one of y'all to be going up five-twenty-two, going over Chester Gap Mountain and have an auto accident, and you gotta sit there for a certain period of time, wait for fire and rescue to get there, because we can't hear the, hear the page, or our phones don't pick up there because we have limited cell service. And that's what happens a lot of times with our I am Responding. Sometimes it won't come through as soon as the call happens, and we might get it twenty minutes later when we get in the area where we have service. And before I shut up and get out of the way and let the others talk, one thing that I want to also say is, in the response that we got from the county and everything, we need a representative from the county at our meetings. Where the county's got to determine who's gonna be at our meetings. If there was someone there, whether it's a supervisor or whoever it may be, maybe we won't have to send so many letters with our concerns to make sure it's documented and everything. The other is, as far as Mr. Atkins, as far as the association's representative on EMS council, you have a letter on that as well. Mr. Atkins has represented this association on EMS council. I'm not gonna say how long I've been in it now, because I don't wanna call him out, but it's been quite a long time, and he's done a very good job. Well, I shouldn't say very good, he's done an excellent job. All these new ambulances you see running around this county that the county didn't have to pay for, maybe twenty, when we get an eighty-twenty grant, and we're only paying twenty percent of it, a lot of the things need to go to Mr. Atkins sitting back here, because he's the one sitting at that table, fighting for Rappahannock County as far as when it comes times to grants and, and everything, and he's been doing a great job. He's been bringing information back, sharing it with the association, no issues at all. So as the association, we still want some, a volunteer on there to represent the volunteers. And we are recommending that Jack Atkins stay on there. We just talked about it at the last association meeting, we were talking about it before that meeting, when the letter came in in March, if we had received it and knew it was coming up for replacement, but that is what it is. But again, Jack Atkins has saved this county a lot of money by sitting on that EMS council, and he's, he's been volunteering to do it. And when he goes, he's using his own vehicle to go back and forth and everything. So that's a lot of time and dedication, not only being a president of a volunteer company, but also serving on committees like that and everything. And I think when we have someone like that and has saved this county money, maybe being a taxpayer myself, we, we need to look at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Anyone else?
Hate microphones. Sherri Hamel Huff, Hampton District. I'm President of the Flin Hill Fire Department at the moment. I'm a life member, forty years in the Flin Hill Volunteer Fire Department. Mr. Fraser, thank you for coming to the last association meeting, and I really hope you didn't feel too beat up when you left, but we appreciate you being there. I want to complain about the pagers. I never considered myself really in the north end of the county, since I'm three miles down the Fodder Stack, and the service is lousy. Fortunately, my son's around a lot, he's younger than I am. When he can climb over the bed and put the pager on the right angle, on the right part of the window, it's usually pretty good. I'm not climbing over the bed. There was a call this afternoon, hour, hour and a half ago. Couldn't understand what seven was saying, it was a car wreck. And I'll admit, my hearing's not as good as it used to be, but between the static and the garble, and then what really gets me is, in some of the calls, you get sometimes two, two and a half minutes of solid static, which means, again, if it's on the windowsill, I've gotta climb over the bed to shut it off, because it's making me crazy. And I have timed it for over two and a half minutes before I get crazy enough to make the effort. So I just wanted to say that I think the pager system sucks, and that everybody knows about it, even though I'm only three miles down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Kay Clark, Hampton District. I'm a volunteer at Washington Fire and Rescue, and of course, pagers. We have, it's, I live five road miles from the station, off of Long Mountain Road on Ridgeview Lane. Cell service sucks, so pager was very critical. Our old pagers worked very well. This does not. It's static, it's garbled. My husband and I, we have two pagers. We cannot figure out a place to put them. Once in a while, I have one window that it will get relatively good service. We also purchased an amplifier, hoping that if we amplified the signal, we would get, you know, the reception. Did not work. Cannot rely on the cell phones, because we have, you know, spotty cell service, so the pager is critical for us to be able to respond when there's an emergency.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Sean Nick, Hampton District, and I'm here to represent Rappahannock County Fire and Rescue Association. First, I'd like to speak on the radios. Thirty-two years ago, when I came to this county as a law enforcement officer on low-band system, their radios were two-hundred times better than they are today. Hands down, this system is messed up throughout the county, from Harris Hollow to Sherri Hamel Huff on Fodder Stack Road, to Kay's house down Tiger Valley. Something drastically needs to happen with Harris, or they've been paid in full, or what? I don't know, because I listened to the call when Chester got hit, Gap got hit for a structured fire in the middle of the night. And I hate to say it, seeing one of these people be left hanging when we don't get a call at two o'clock in the morning. It's essential to public safety. Something drastically needs to happen. So the letter I'll read today is, "At the Rappahannock County Volunteer Fire and Rescue Association meeting in May, it was brought to the attention of the association that the county had discussed at the May meeting." May third, if I recall correctly, of the Board of Supervisors replacing Jack Atkins as one of the two representatives from Rappahannock County, Rappahannock, Rappahannock, EMS council. You all should have received a hard copy of this letter and email, signed by me on Thursday. "It appears that once again, there's been a complete breakdown of communications between the county and the association. As has recent passed, the association has written two letters to the county that Kevin just recently covered, and we not even received the courtesy of receiving written acknowledgement back that the letters were even received, much less any response on how the concerns of the association were going to be addressed. Mr. Fraser came to the last meeting. We certainly appreciate it. As Kevin stated, somebody needs to come to our meeting once in a while. Maybe we quit firing these letters. Maybe we can get some answers. Maybe we can work together. But now, we're not, we're working together, but through these letters. That's why we're here today. So I'm on a half a day of vacation to come to a meeting that there's no need to be at." The first acknowledged letter dated March third, twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one was in reference to the new E nine-one-one coordinator and proposed new GIS administrator. The second unacknowledged letter was April twenty-first, referred to the association's stance on the proposed increase in the personal property tax relief and the matter in which the county's emergency responders were deemed to be eligible for the personal property tax relief in twenty-twenty-one. There's two appointed representatives on EMS council for the Rappahannock County, Donald Gore and Jack Atkins. One of the representatives, what we understand is represented by the county, that's Donald Gore. The other represents the Fire and Rescue Association Volunteers, and that's Jack Atkins. Representative from the association, Jack Atkins, who has admirably served the association on the council for nearly twenty years. Jack's a familiar face to the council, is a member of one of the county's fire and rescue companies, and is and has been intimately familiar with EMS issues in the county. The same can be said except for Donald Gore as well. The association is perfectly satisfied to continue Jack Atkins as our representative on EMS council, and is, and is reappointing him to our, as our representative for the upcoming term on the council. The association is on record as strongly opposed to Jack being replaced in his role on the council. Moreover, Jack also serves the council in other capacities, not just, not just a representative to the council, but to replace him on the council would be an injustice to both the association and the council. It was pointed out at the May meeting at the supervisors that the incoming OEM coordinator has been considered to be appointed to the county on EMS council to replace Jack in June, when the OEM coordinator was due to become a county employee. The association is on record as seriously opposing this potential appointment of a new office emergency management coordinator for several reasons. Number one, the OEM coordinator is not a member or nor is an EMS provider with any other county's fire and rescue companies. Two, the new OEM coordinator has not yet been introduced to the association, who was just introduced today to everyone here. Three, the new OEM coordinator is not intimately familiar with the county's EMS system, the EMS providers in the county, or with any concerns of the county's EMS providers or the agency, more especially since he's just joined the county staff two days ago. This letter been written on the third. To new, to have the new OEM coordinator appointed to the EMS council in a short time as having just been hired would be a serious travesty and a detriment to the EMS agency and providers of Rappahannock County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Jack Atkins, Jackson District. You heard all the talk. I get good pay for going to the council meeting, real good. But I'm here for another issue. No correspondence coming back to the association and individual personnel. I requested a salary adjustment through an email. No response. I've sent an email requesting inappropriate actions of some county employees, different things. Some of your supervisors know what's going on, and I am aware of face-to-face contact being made about this situation. I sent an email about an audit request, where's our papers for Amosville. I got no response in eight days. Only way I found out about it was at the association meeting, where the chiefs and the association president showed me the letter. We had to have a special meeting of the association on a Sunday evening about paid personnel versus what other association was gonna recommend. Today is over six months. Nothing has happened. In Amosville, it's had radio problems from day one. We've been advising, but it been said, this is all Amosville. Amosville- Amosville, but it's coming to light today that it's county-wide. And I guess all of you got this email that says you did. I'm just going to read one paragraph. "I am receipt of a tax letter from the Rappahannock County Fire and Rescue on public safety radios. Understand this subject was discussed at your monthly meeting. As noted, in the past, association like a written report on monthly meetings on particular topics, I'm open to these requests, but due to my family obligation, multiple night meetings during the week, I am not going to attend, not going to attend the association meetings." Okay. If you have a call, any of you have a call. We've got a family, too. Do you want us to stay in the bed, not get out? We only have one meeting a month. We are 24/7/365. Think about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Glennie?
Paige Glennie, Jackson District. I'm very, after all my years on the fire levy board, I'm very concerned about what has happened with the relationship between the association and the county. These letters are very disturbing. That communication has gotten that bad to such a critical service as required by this county. And it does nothing but damage the volunteer system, which is so critical to the bottom line. How can we afford not to have these people doing what they're doing? That then lets me transition to the draft MOA with Chester Gap. I fail to understand where the emergency is now. That was the excuse before. The pan, the plan-demic is over. Even this evening, you are going to eliminate your emergency order here. To date, the association never has provided, to my knowledge, an assessment on BLS with a recommendation to hire paid BLS responders. They have answered on the ALS side and came up with a solution, which you all have approved, for a centralized ALS at Washington. So where in this MOA do we not only increase the financial commitment for the BLS, but we add ALS? In my mind, you're in violation of the service agreement, which says that those recommendations are to come from the association. If Chester Gap community and Warren County need, believe they need this, and they probably do, they should pay for it. Why are taxpayers in the other end of the county paying for this? This is, this doesn't seem right. Why is it that the other companies are able to get volunteers, but Chester Gap can't? I mean, I believe even Company 4 is getting volunteers from Warren County. Means they drive by Chester Gap on their way to Flint Hill. I don't, I don't understand. I don't, I really don't understand why we continue this at Chester Gap. And when the next company comes, how are you going to say no? How can you possibly say no? This is not the financial solution that is affordable for the county. If you had all seven companies going paid, what do you think that price is going to be? Thank you very much.
Yes, Sheila?
Whatever. Thanks. Okay, Sheila Gressinger, Hampton District. I can blow up lots of things. On a happy note, I did go to one of the library meetings, and I wanted to say what a great job they're doing, listening to people, offering up suggestions as to what they like about the library, what they would like to see there, going around talking to teenagers. The one thing that got my attention, coincidentally, one of my friends had come over from Luray, and she said, she was so happy that her library had just opened, reopened, and she was able to go to the library and read the newspapers. And one of the things they brought up in our library was that there really isn't a comfortable place to sit down and peruse the newspapers. So I went to the library, and I re-upped my library card. And as a matter of fact, there are two easy chairs, ones in one room and ones in another. Neither one are by the newspapers. So I mean, that could be just a simple furniture rearranging, but I think it goes a little bit deeper than that, as to all the different things that our county needs, and the things that we would like to encourage our children to be able to use the library and to see it as a happy place. The other thing, I keep talking about our need for housing. So today, I drove around, and I took pictures of houses in the town of Little Washington, along the highway in Sperryville, of these big houses that have been turned into businesses. So that tells me that there are houses that are still needed. So regardless of what Mr. Maxwell had in his fantasy that he put in the paper last week, there is a need. And to my way of thinking, he did a very creative fantasy of fear mongering, talking about housing in Little Washington. People have complained, and I would use harsher words, about Little Washington doesn't have any civil, they have no people living there. Then you try to have people to possibly live there, and it's like, oh my gosh, the sky's falling. Oh my gosh. What do you want, 20 houses in this place that would replace how many that are already lost there? I mean, it really just blows my mind. So, and furthermore, they're not going to pop up like mushrooms after a rain. It's going to take a while to build, say, 20 houses. It would take a while to do the planning and all that. The other thing, he goes into traffic and everything. The food pantry, please let me assure you, the food pantry is not going to have hundreds of people in and out of Little Washington. We, I think they service, I volunteered with them for a while. They might serve 150 families, I think, sort of kind of. They come three days a week, Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday. Of those families, they can come twice a month, and the people who are coming in probably average about 20 visits each of those days. So there's, as far as traffic and congestion, there are not going to be hundreds of vehicles traveling in and around. And then as far as the post office, I go to the Sperryville Post Office now, that is now handling two post offices. The new post office in Little Washington truly is not going to have hordes of trucks in and out, the way they are describing on RappNet and in here. So I really think it's much ado about nothing, as Bill Fletcher said one time, when we had a little to-do about Mr. Abdo coming into town, which sort of failed. I, okay, the other thing, when he's talking about, oh my gosh, this is going to make development, they're going to have Flint Hill townhouses and whatever. The whole point of our comprehensive plan, obviously, is growth in and around the villages. So that's where we want our growth to occur. I've said it, you know, 50 million, billion times, we have conservation easements. 20% of our county has helped to channel the growth into our villages in and around. So that is not going to happen. I also did hear, on our favorite listener, that possibly, you know, there's Eldon Farms. Oh my gosh, what's going to happen to Eldon Farms? Okay, so I got out this particular map, and it shows Little Washington up here, it shows Warranton, wait a minute, I want to make sure I hit it right. It shows Washington here, Warranton over here. Down here is Culpeper, and around here, I think, is where Eldon Farms would be. So where that's going to happen, that growth is going to be coming into Culpeper. Okay? It's not going to affect, we're not going to have hordes of people traveling down to 11, down to Warranton and everything, from that, if perhaps that did, that did occur. It would be going down Culpeper, and be going south. I used to study this stuff. And so, you know, if that happens, it'll happen, but I don't really think we're going to be that affected. I don't think our view shed that we've had so many meetings on, coming up from Warranton, you see our beautiful view shed, that's always going to be protected. You have too many easements and everything. So I would like to allay the fears of people, that I really don't think the sky's going to be falling anytime soon. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheila? Public comment, again? Let me see if, have we, everybody's done in here? All right, I'll give you one more minute, Kevin.
So Kevin Williams, Waco, is President of the Association, but I'm also President of Chester Gap Fire Department. I know you all have a topic on your agenda, as you did hear Mr. Paige Glennie mention. I want to make two points of clarification on that and everything, as far as Warren County and recruitment, retention, why we can't get members if they're passing us going to Flint Hill. I'll stand here and tell you that some, a lot of those members were members of Chester Gap. And I'm sorry if we run a disciplinary program, where if you don't follow the bylaws and everything, you have so many warnings and stuff like that. But there's a reason, he's correct, there is a reason they come from, they pass departments and everything, but they're passing our departments because we run a tight ship. We don't, it's not a free-for-all or a fraternity. Another thing, was talking about the service agreement and everything, I'll point out in the association's bylaws, Article 12, General, Section under Section 1, the officers of this association shall have no power, as such, over the internal affairs of any member, company, or department. So the association, in the past year, we've been looking at what Chester Gap's issue is kind of an internal affair. That's why it's never been brought to the association, as the chiefs haven't talked about it. Second thing, I've heard quite a bit, I'm a taxpayer in this county, I live in Chester Gap. If you all remember, I know you remember, Mr. Fraser, several years ago, when Chester Gap used to get funded, we were always on a percentage base. And we gave back a lot of money to this county, because our percentage base, we couldn't use up all that money and everything in our budget that was allocated for us. I don't know where that money went and everything, but just keep that in mind, that we used to not always use our budget and everything. A lot of money got turned back in. Now we're getting 100% operational. Second thing is talking about Chester Gap paying for it. As President, yeah. If we had the funds, we'd pay for it. But also, let me point out, Chester Gap's not the only fire department to get money from this county during this CARES Act and everything. None of that came to the association either, or the chief's committee. It came straight to the board, as we are doing, Chester Gap would be doing today, and everything. We're paying for service with our money. The money that we're getting is coming right back in to pay for the money that we've been putting out. What some of the other departments got, we could have done the same thing, but we're not. We're protecting our citizens, we're not putting our bank accounts to it on. Thank you.
I do see we have several people on Zoom. If you have anything that you wish to say during public comment, please do the Zoom raise hand, and let us know you'd like to speak. Not seeing any? Any more hands? Okay. I'm going to close the public comment period. Thank you all very much. We're now moving into the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I'd like to pull the, at least the minutes for February 1st meeting, the ones that we were discussing last month.
So we're pulling the February 1st minutes again? Anything else in the consent agenda? All right. We can discuss the minutes first?
You should. Consent agenda, and then move on to the items.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'll move that we adopt the consent agenda after removing the February 1 minutes for further discussion.
Thank you very much. All right, I have a motion, a second, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right.
I'm going to pass this down. What I've done is added, the language in red is just added to the first paragraph of the existing minutes that we have in front of us for adoption. It's just added to the bottom of the existing paragraph. I think it clears up a little bit of the action of what transpired that day.
There, it probably makes sense, too, to note the question that I posed to the deputy that was here about how many people were outside the courthouse, and with there only being six, there was plenty of room to accommodate them in the courtroom.
How would you want to add that in?
Let's see.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Didn't we agree on a hard deadline for amending meeting minutes? And what did we agree upon? And were these submitted by that deadline?
We agreed that we would do them by a certain time, and if they weren't done by a certain time, we would do them in the course of the meeting. And then last month, we agreed to table these until this meeting.
Yeah, I remember that. So, so, okay, the second part of that is what I didn't catch.
That's correct. I think it would be appropriate to say, at the end of the first sentence, Ms. Smith inquired how many people were lined up outside, and the deputies responded that there were only six, which could be accommodated in the courtroom.
I move we adopt these minutes as they've been amended, including Mr. Fraser's addition and Ms. Smith's further addition after the first sentence.
Is there a hard copy for Mr. Curry?
This one is sure.
Just go on a particular page or section?
This page one is the first paragraph under adoption of agenda. This is where the discussion transpired.
What is the addition to what is handed out?
What I just stated, that then Ms. Smith inquired of the deputy how many people were lined up outside the courthouse, at which point the deputy responded that there were six, which could, there was room to accommodate in the courtroom.
And where would you like that inserted?
After Mr. Fraser's comments.
Did that make sense? Do you have it?
I didn't write it down, but we're being recorded.
Okay. Mr. Whitsman, do you want to move with your motion again?
Sure. I move that we adopt the February 1st minutes with the additional sentences that Mr. Fraser's put in hard copy form, and with the additional changes that Ms. Smith has proposed, that I believe would be in addition after the last quotation mark in the first line.
I'll second that motion.
Move a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right, thank you.
I was writing down. Who seconded that?
I did.
Ms. Smith. All right. That was the only minutes we.
Yeah, you're, the question I have is that you did identify the Chester Gap Yeah, you're, the question I have is that you did identify the Chester Gap Agenda Item as being 2:30, knowing that we were going to have guests, obviously past that time, I don't know if the board wants to adjust the order of items to have that happen now, or is he going to move for appointments first?
I'll move that we adjust the agenda to, for that to happen now, because we got people here.
Second.
We have a motion to bump up the Chester Gap, which is old business one, to go now. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor, or any further discussion?
I just have to say, I don't really understand how this is old business. I know that that's how this agenda was organized, but this is a new agreement, to my mind, it's new business, but that, I guess, is neither here nor there.
I agree with that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right, thank you. Well, I'm very glad that the guests from Chester, or from Warren County could attend today. We have Chief Bonzano, Supervisor Colors, who actually is their chairman of Warren County Board, and I think everybody knows Chief Brown. So, I am going to let them speak to this memorandum and tell us what is happening currently and the reason for this request.
Madam Chair, point of order. Has this already been negotiated on behalf of Rappahanna County?
No, sir, that's why we're here.
There's been no negotiation by Rappahanna County on this?
No, sir. Warren County just happened to have their board meeting earlier than we did. We have made no agreement.
We've had no member of this board or no member of our staff involved in this discussion prior to this meeting.
I do believe Mr. Curry, in his documentation, stated that there was a meeting.
That's what I'm trying to get, I guess, I'm slow at doing things and trying to get the point made, but no one was authorized by this board to negotiate on behalf of it for extension of the service agreement. Am I mistaken? Did we discuss that at an earlier meeting that perhaps I was not present?
Do you believe that a supervisor in any district can meet with their citizens?
Yeah, but I think somebody has went further than this. That's what I'm trying to get, I'm trying to get information here. How did we get this far if nobody was negotiating on behalf of Rappahanna County? How did Warren County even know that we might be being this susceptible?
Warren County put up their offer, basically, that they had agreed to, and based on that, their decision, that's why we brought this one to us today.
You're saying you've met with members of Warren County?
I actually have lunch with Supervisor Colors every now and then. Is that a problem?
No, certainly not, because I've been the same with my colleagues over in Culpeper County, but I'm just trying to figure out how we got this far if there's been no negotiation on behalf of Rappahanna County.
As far as I'm concerned, today is the negotiation of Rappahanna County.
No, today is the done deal. There's a memorandum of agreement here, and that was signified to me that somebody's been discussing something somewhere. Am I mistaken? I'm trying to figure out if I missed a meeting somewhere along the way where we actually approved this, at least authorized or instructed somebody to go discuss this on behalf of the board. No one was authorized to do this, and I'm just trying to figure out if it happened somehow.
It is no different than the first memorandum, Mr. Fraser.
That one shouldn't have happened the way it did either.
I just, the first memorandum said that all parties were going to review the second, the whole program during the budget process. I think that's what was attempted to be done.
We didn't do that. Actually, I brought it up one time to talk about it, and no member of this board wanted to talk about either a way to pay for it or any other discussion of it.
I believe it's happening right now.
No, no, I'm thinking, this is the, this is the done deal. This is the approval of something that somebody has already discussed previously in the past. When was it discussed previously in the past and by whom? And by what authorization was that done? I don't think those are two very big questions to answer, but I think they certainly need to be asked and they certainly need to be addressed. I'm not saying I'm opposed to this, I'm opposed to the way it winds up on the table again. This is not the first time things like this have happened recently. We're supposed to be a body of five members. Five members. So, can we proceed? I'm wondering. I don't think so, Mr. Paris. I think that, I think that it ought to concern you too, how this thing got this far without any authorization by the board. This never happened on the boards that we served previously.
I just want to say, I understand the misgivings that Mr. Fraser has, and I feel like, as I sit here and look at my cohort on the Warren County Board, Ms. Colors, who I consider my friend and that I've enjoyed meals with also during VAECO trainings and think very highly of, I appreciate that she's here joining us today. I think that going through this document is a legal and financial responsibility that it creates for Rappahannock County, and as such, it is a negotiation. And I'm not entirely sure that we should be negotiating something like this in public. And the only other touch point I have for this really, in my experience on this board beside our original go at this, which was put through as an emergency, was when we negotiated our refuse agreement with Page County. And it was important that we stay away from them and let them work through their deliberations, and they gave us the same respectful thought and let us work through our deliberations and have a constructive back and forth so that at the end of the day, we all had what we wanted out of the agreement. So, that's my touch point for an agreement like this, and I do feel like it's, you know, kind of presented as something we're going to do today and that it's old business, but this, to me, is truly new business, and it creates an additional financial obligation for the county.
Yeah, I appreciate all those points. I would just say that we've heard several times today that business should be conducted publicly, and this is precisely what we're doing here. And unlike a refuse and recycling agreement with another county, there we had an existing arrangement with another vendor, and so a closed session in that case is appropriate because we're trying to protect our negotiating position vis a vis a potential new contract. Here, we know the potential partner, and I know that, I watched Warren County's discussion of this, which was open to the public, and so I think this is wholly appropriate to be talking about and working through this agreement publicly. It's, we're not in a situation like we were with refuse and recycling where we're having to protect our potential position vis a vis another competitor or vendor, but I appreciate, appreciate your points.
Well, I think there's, we should still discuss the terms, and discussing the terms publicly could put us at a disadvantage.
Well, that's what we can do now, but there is a memorandum of agreement here that you've signed, Ms. Smith, to, that is agreed that the above reimbursement shall be subject to submission on a monthly quarterly statement, and also it's finally agreed that this program shall be reviewed jointly by Chester Gap and Rappahannock County and Warren County as part of the budget process, so that's what we're continuing to do today.
Well, and I did sign as chairman of the board after a vote of this body to adopt that document.
Right. So, I mean.
So, when did this body decide to go back and renegotiate that document? Was there any action or a vote of this board to do that?
I don't know, but we have something, we have something we've all looked at and something to vote on.
I think part of this, it is for Chief Brown, Chief Bonzano, to speak to why we need an agreement moving forward at all, because this one, this past one ends at the, I believe, the end of June, and so it was important that it was on the agenda for the June meeting.
The issue is, does this make sense or does it not make sense? And that's what we can decide, because as been pointed out previously today, it's, this is important business, the saving of lives, and this is what we're talking about.
Yep.
So, we need to figure out what's the best way to accommodate that. And so, we got a situation where, you know, we sharing responses and expenses with Warren County, and so really all we have to think about today is this, does this particular agreement make sense or does it not make sense? So, it's pretty simple, I think, my decision. Well, like I said, I don't have, right now, I'm not taking the position for or against it. What I have a problem with is that it shows up like this. Well, then, there's, you know, you have a question with the procedure, I guess. You don't have a question with the procedure? I'm really only concerned about what's the best thing to do for the county and for, you know, the rescue squad and how to save lives. That's my only concern. I'm not. The end result. I'm really concerned that we keep going down these rabbit trails of not conducting all the public business in the public, and I think this is, this smacks of that. So, yes. I don't know why that doesn't concern you. I mean, you gave me a call on Monday morning or sometime recently, and we talked about county issues, just the two of us. It happens, and, you know, so we can sit here and. I don't think that we all get the same information at the same time, and I have plenty of proof of that. All right, so you're saying this is the first time you've seen this? No, when it showed up on the board docs, yeah. Right. Okay. And normally, what we used to do back in the old days is that the board would have a vote and either instruct or authorize one or two members of this body or the county administrator to go represent them at XYZ location, and we all knew that it was happening. Yeah, this is not a new subject, this has been discussed. But this is a new MOA.
I mean, it takes the level of funding from $60,000 a year to $146,000 a year, if I'm reading this right. That's quite a substantial increase in our obligation.
With no, with no prior discussion. We were basically told the other one was temporary because there weren't any EMTs anymore at Chester Gap because of COVID.
I think out of respect for our guests, if the board will allow them to speak, some of those questions will be answered, and then we can continue this conversation.
Go ahead.
Upright.
Chief Todd Brown, Chester Gap Fire Department. I'd just like to start off by thanking y'all for supporting what program that Chester Gap implemented a year ago. This program has made a very, very big impact in the Chester Gap community. As you know, I don't know if you knew, know or not, but there's over 800 people that live in a less than a two square mile radius of Chester Gap. That's not counting coming down off the mountain, going to 522, to Flint Hill and those areas. We provide a service to all the county, we provide a service to the Wakefield District. We have responded to calls with the paid personnel all the way to Tiger Valley, so it's not just a program that has been isolated to the Chester Gap area. We have had a little bit of a upturn on membership. We've had a few people join, but they're not running calls. I've heard, you know, you discuss about the COVID and the emergency that we were in, and it was done as a COVID emergency. Couple weeks ago, trying not to step into state policies, but, you know, the school was shut down here a couple weeks ago, and the people that had COVID were from Chester Gap. One of my members just informed me yesterday that his mother-in-law in Chester Gap is positive COVID. So, you know, we, COVID is still around, it's still, it's still in our face, it's still, it's still around. Yes, the vaccine is helping, and hopefully we're on the, on the right road to get away from this, but that does not fix the problem. I've been in fire and rescue for over 40 years. I've been in Chester Gap for approximately about 38 years, well, I've spent fire and rescue longer than that, but, you know, I've seen volunteers come and go, I've seen the volunteer numbers go up, I've seen them go down, I've seen them level out. The day and time that we're in right now is a bad time for volunteers. Rappahannock County is very lucky that they have Amosville and the people that are running down there right now, but, you know, it's the same people every time, you know, it's the same face. I see it, I know, I know that's what it is, just like Little Washington, it's the same face. And, you know, once, at some point in time, you're going to burn these people out. I'm speaking from experience. Our EMS captain just informed me three weeks ago that she was no longer going to be able to fulfill her duties. She's not going to do the Q and I reports that we have to do for the state, she's not going to be able to run calls, she's still afraid of the COVID, and she said, you know, I've been doing all the paperwork, but I don't have time right now to do this. And so, you know, the one paid person that y'all are supporting half of has made a very big impact. I've got a letter right here that I was supposed to give to Mrs. Donahue, and I'd like to send it to you. We've had several, you know, several people that this has impacted. One of our own members, he lives in Flint Hill, he had a heart attack. He knew that the paid staff was at Chester Gap, so, you know, he calls me on the phone and says, hey, I'm on the way. I said, what's going on? He said, well, I don't feel good. We met him, told him not to drive any further, we met him and got him, got him into ambulance, and he was having a full-blown heart attack. If it was not for that paid person sitting there, the doctor told him, 10 minutes, he had what they called a widow maker. And when we got him, we transported him straight to Winchester, we met up with a medic from Warren County, the medic from Warren County got in the unit, we transported him straight to Winchester, they took him straight to the cath lab, and the doctor told him, 10 minutes, you wouldn't be here. So, you know, the money that y'all have spent has been well worth it. It's been, we had another tragic case in Chester Gap, we had an eight-year-old girl that was attacked with a hammer. If it was not for that crew being at that station and getting there as quick as they could, we don't know what the outcome of that child's life would be right now. But thank God, she is recovering very well, she's gone back to school, she's really, you know, really done, done well. What I'm trying to get at, you know, I've heard different comments, well, you know, we're funding Chester Gap. No, you're not funding Chester Gap. You are, you know, providing funds to pay the staff that Chester Gap is managing. Chester Gap's not, our bank account has not grown one penny from this program. You know, it's been other CARES Act money given out that, you know, increased bank accounts. Our bank account has not increased. The people that have benefited from this is the public and the taxpayers of Rappahannock County, not just Chester Gap. We're working very close right now with Warren County. We're in the process of upgrading our ambulance from a BLS unit, which is just basic life support, it's just EMT only. We have to meet up with a medic from Warren in order to make it a medic unit. Right now, we're in the process of upgrading that unit to a medic unit that will be available for Rappahannock County and Warren County. And Warren County is funding the cost for this. This is not free. The equipment that needs to upgrade this to a medic unit, like I say, is not free. Warren County has. Warren County has graciously offered to, to put the bill to do this. So it, it's, it's a good program. I've got, I think there's one guy, one, I've got two people here that are two of our paid people. Just wanted, if you need to ask him any questions, this is Jeff Thornburg. He is a, he works for the FBI, but he also works for us part-time. John Kane, he is, works at Manassas Park as a paid firefighter. He's also the chief at New Baltimore Fire Company in Fall Kier. So, you know, they, they know other systems. This system that we're doing works great. It's saving the taxpayers money by doing this. And, and like I say, the, the main people that are benefiting for this is the public. I mean, it's, it's, it makes a big difference when you have somebody there instead of having to wait 10 to 12 minutes for somebody to respond. Some departments have a 10-minute response time. Time is, you know, is, is against us in this business. You know, we, we need to get there as quick as we can, provide the service as quick as we can. And, and like I say, the, the program has worked. It's, it's worked very well. It's made a huge difference in people's lives. We've had a few letters that's been sent in supporting this. We have one lady there that, she just gave me that to give to Mrs. Donahue today. You know, we, we not only run calls, we have an elderly lady that's in her, close to 90 years old. And the paid staff, if they're not on a call, they walk across the street, help her get in her car to get her doctor's appointments. They help get her in and out of the bed when needed. So, I mean, it's not only, they're not only sitting there just running calls. They, they're there for the, for the community. And it, it's really been a, a good thing. But like I say, we're in the process of working hand in hand with Chief Bonzano to upgrade to a medic unit. We have three medics right now that we can't utilize because we need two people in order to do that. Per state regulations. It's not, it's not my regulation. It's state regulation. We, we have to have two people. You have to have an EMT to be with the medic to make it a medic unit. So we're, we're in the process of doing this, and this is why we're asking, you know, for your support with this. Is to ensure that, you know, the medic unit gets out. And like I say, it's not only for Chester Gap. It's, it's, it's available for the entire camp. But I'd like to say again, I'd just like to thank y'all for your support from the, you know, from the first time. Because like I say, we were down to one EMT, and we're still down to one EMT. We have one that's just started, but, you know, going to class and running calls, two different things. But thank y'all very much.
Thank you. Chief Bonzano?
Hello. I'm new to the system. My name is Jimmy Bonzano. I'm the fire chief in Warren County. And I thank you for having me here today. If y'all don't mind, I'm gonna back away and just speak. I think you probably can hear me.
If you push the handle and pull her.
Okay, thank you. This is way too loud for me. I'm way too comfortable with this at the beginning. So I'm new to the system. I come from Arlington County. I was there for 34 years. I retired as their fire chief, and I'm blessed to be here today. I, I come here simply, I got back into the system because it's what everybody does in this room that is where I get my energy. It's about serving the constituents that we, we're here for, right? And it's not political boundaries. It's not Rappahannock County. It's not Warren County. It's about doing the right thing. It's about serving the constituent. So I've only been here five, six months, but I sat down with Todd, and I said, you know, chief, is there some low-hanging fruit here where we can look to upgrade the basic life support unit to an ALS unit? With the rationale being to work from the fire ground or the incident back, to get better at what we do and to serve the constituent. That's the priority. I understand you guys had to figure out how you're gonna underwrite it, so I respect that. That's not what this piece is. But if you look at standards, if you look at hard association standards, NFPA standards, what we're advocating is the norm, actually. Not to exceed it. We're still aspirational in what we're trying to achieve with what we have. Frankly, what Mr., what Chief Brown has is not sustainable, okay? And the reality is, I'd hate to be my daughter with an apneic pulses child across the street when we can't send a unit when that unit's not staffed. And that's what this comes down to. So I, I don't think I can really say anything more or less that Chief Brown hasn't already said, but I'll be glad to entertain any conversation or any questions. All due respect to everybody here in the room.
So I have a question. Over in Warren County, do you have other, do you have companies that are hybrid? Like we're trying to do here, that are a combination of volunteers and paid?
So in Warren County, we have a combination system. We have two of our stations that are completely volunteer and actually have a hard time getting out every day. It's a concern. So as a result of that, most recently, I went in front of our board supervisors, Chairman Colours, and asked with some empirical evidence to support staffing those positions through, beginning with safer funding to include soft costs. 24/7, 365, two-person staffing, what Chief Brown's advocating to do just now. And the rationale behind that is, again, working back from the fire ground is, in, in our business, time is tissue. So if you think of door, door-to-balloon or catheterization, advanced life support, basic life support, and that continuum of care is a priority. It should be any different in Front Royal than it is in Rivermont, as an example. I hope that answers your question, but yes, sir.
Yeah, just gives me an idea of what works. Thank you.
And it might help some of the folks that are on Zoom and in the room. The difference between what an ALS person can do and a BLS person, advanced life support versus basic life support, I think is, is big.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am. So basic life support is basically to go to work, to sustain life. So it's your CPR, it's your advanced airway techniques, it's, you know, A, B, C, it's airway breathing and circulation. The things we have to do, the basic tamponade, to go to work to sustain life. To, a continuum of that care is the ALS interventions, intravenous access, intratradial inhibition, drug regimen protocol to, to, to the nth degree, if you will. And we work within the scope of our practice, our medical director, under the direction of Dr. Bennett. And the rationale behind that is to, we have set protocols given set circumstances. Apneic pulses child receives A, B, C, D, N, E. It's very scheduled and very direct. Same thing with any other adult. So I hope that answers your question.
Chief, Chief Brown just stated Chester Gap population's about 800, and then you could add to that probably several hundred in sort of your immediate environs that you serve. Just look, taking away the border between the two counties. Can you just get, estimate or rough guess what kind of population on the Warren County side would be served by this proposed arrangement?
I think if you looked, and I'll let Chief Brown speak to the specific number statistically, it's about, I want to say 60-some percent you'd be coming to our county. Now, let me also say to you too, that, and this isn't my first rodeo, if you forgive me. In Arlington County, some 20-some years ago, we were having the same conversations with Fairfax County, Alexandria. And the concerns there were just what we're talking about, who, who best to underwrite it. So we came to automaticated and mutual aid agreement. Well, the cost of going across, it was seamless. So regardless of the letter jacket you were wearing, if I was running in Alexander, if I was going to Arlington or Fairfax, which I did over the 30-some-year period, we all operated on the standard, standard operating procedure, same protocol, right? There was no differential in call volume because of you gave as much as you gave, excuse me, you gave as much as you got. And, and, and point to that, and I've talked to Ms. Donahue and Ms. Colours about this specifically, is if you look at the differential in call, how many times, as an example, Company One from Front Royal comes over the mountain, Chester Gap into Rappahannock County, at no cost to the citizen base, and nor will there ever be, simply because it's the right thing to do. It's the closest available unit to the person that needs the service. Thank you all.
We do probably run a good 60 to 65% of our calls in Warren County. At least, we, we do run a lot of calls in Warren County. We do have two very large subdivisions that are in our first unit in Warren County that are just over the mountain. If anybody goes to Front Royal, you know, you've got Lake Front Royal on that side, and it's probably a good 3,000 people in there. And you have Point of Woods that's on the right side, plus Blue Ridge Mountain Estates that are, it's also up there. And I would expect that that's close to 3,000 population also. So, yes, we do have a, a large, you know, populated area in, you know, that we do serve. And like I say, we do probably run 60% of our calls in Warren County. But that's not, not really, you know, to, to look at the Rappahannock side. We, we've always had a, a little bit of an issue, I don't know if you remember, a while back with the dispatch, you know, the run areas and everything. And that's, and that's still in place. I mean, we, we, we normally, very seldom, I mean, we're, we're third due to settles in Flint Hill. So, I mean, they're gonna get Washington first before us, and, you know, if it's a medic call, Amosville will be dispatched there. But like I say, once we upgrade to a medic unit, and, you know, that, that will change, I'm sure, I would think, I would hope, because we're closer. So, and, and that's kind of a, you know, work in progress too, with trying to get the run order straight. I'm the head of the chiefs for Rappahannock, and we have been working on it. The, the box assignments were, you know, everybody's areas are calculated out. We're real close to getting that finished. So hopefully, that will solve some of that problem. But for, for years, you know, Chester Gap very seldom ran past Huntley. We, we just wasn't called into Rappahannock County. We, you know, I've been here before this board before for that exact reason. Because we used to be, you know, our funding was based on a percentage of how many calls we ran in Rappahannock versus Warren. And, you know, it was unfair to us because we wasn't being dispatched. I mean, it could be a call on the, the north side of Flint Hill, they never caught us. So, you know, we, we had that changed. But, but yeah, just to speak on the, you know, on the areas, yes, it is a populated area, yes.
And pivoting away from Warren County as a variable in this equation, and just thinking about Rappahannock County and the initiative underway to place ALS in the central part of the county perhaps, and I think people have thought perhaps Company One would be a base for that. To what extent would this proposal, if implemented, be duplicative in terms of overlap of service in, in a part of the county? And to what extent would, if, if you have ALS positioned in the middle point of the county, and then Chester Gap also, does, do those two nodes, for lack of a better term, sufficiently cover the county from an ALS perspective?
It would, yes. Plus with the, the ALS that you have running at, at Amosville and Spurryville. Spurryville has, like I say, one person that's running ALS. But like I say, you know, you do have the burnout factor. But I think that the county would be covered very well. The only, the bad thing, you know, if we don't have the program in Chester Gap, I mean, you know, we're, we're 20, 25 minutes away in a chase vehicle. I mean, Chester Gap is too far north, and, and I'm sorry, you know, but by the time an ALS person would leave here, we could have the patient loaded and almost at the hospital. Because we're only five miles from Front Royal. So, you know, the ALS person, you know, in a chase vehicle, really not gonna serve Chester Gap very well. And, and that's why we, you know, have went down this route, you know, trying to implement this. One other thing that I'd kind of like to make a point on, I know that, you know, some jurisdictions don't like to have paid people because they feel it pushes the volunteers out. That's not happening with these people. Like I say, we, we've been doing this for over a year now. And the paid people that we have, like I say, two of them are here today, and they can, they can tell you. You can ask them questions. But it's, it's hand in hand with the volunteers. So our volunteers are not, the five of us, all we have, you know, we, we don't feel that we're being pushed out. We work hand in hand with the volunteers. The process that we have now, a volunteer has to respond in order to drive the paid person. So if there's not a volunteer around, the paid person's no good. That's why we're pushing for the second person, so.
I just want to kind of build, because Ms. Whitson, you asked a really good question. And again, this isn't, this isn't a static situation. You're referring to one element emergency response when you refer to just the EMS side of the house. And we can break that to subsets, basic life support, advanced life support, and the whole idea of continuum of care, expedience of care, all priorities. We haven't even begun to talk about the suppression side of the house. You're, you're still talking about aspirational, in Chester Gap specifically, of a single-pole concept. So you have a bunch of assets in that firehouse, and you have two people going to work right now, one. So think about that. I mean, so, again, what we're asking for is not the moon here. This is bread and butter to go to work with in a single-pole concept, not a multifaceted concept. So, again, a static situation. But I think, I think it's fair that everybody has to, you know, have a conversation about how best you want to serve the citizen base and what you want to underwrite the cost to do it. And that's just a reality. So I just want to be real about that, because it's not just a finite period. I mean, I'll be very honest with you. I'm having conversations with all of our regional neighbors in regards to the importance of us coming across the border and y'all coming back over too. So we can serve the citizen base, not one side or the other, but the citizen base the best of our possibility.
My last question, and then I'll be quiet. So my understanding, reviewing these documents, it would be basically a one-year agreement, renewable after, after that one-year period. During that one-year period, if you could, either one of you speak to, what sort of performance standards would you apply to the, the system once implemented? And how would you make an objective evaluation of whether we're doing well? And the money was, taxpayer dollars were being used, and there was a return on that investment? And what, what red flags would you expect to see if the system was not working as intended?
So performance metrics, and I do this with great duress, but I, I'll speak to that specifically. Two specifics, hard association guidelines, door-to-balloon time, hard association standards, National Fire Protection Agency 1710, 1720, hose lines to doorways to go to work, response times. Those are all the evaluation metrics I use, and I'll advocate to move ahead.
Pretty much, we do the same thing, yeah. I monitor what's going on. We, we make sure that, you know, everybody that's working there is the best we can, you know, we can get. And I mean, it's, it's sitting right here with me. You've got, you've got a guy that's, that works for the FBI that, that works for us. And we have another gentleman sitting back here that is a paid firefighter at, at Manassas Park, and is also. They can tell you, you know, that we, we run things professionally, and if it's not working, of course, we're going, you know, we're going to either fix it or we're going to, you know, adjust it. I mean, our, our main goal was to provide a good service to the taxpayers and citizens of Rappahannock and Warren County. And that's, that's, that's the bottom line for us. Like I say, we, this, this money is not going in our account. It's, it's not being, you know, we're not making money off of this. The funds, you know, we, we pay the personnel, and we set a bill to both counties, and we reimburse them through the system. It, it works good. I haven't had any, any real hitups or, you know, bad experiences since the start. The personnel we have working of the actary profession, the artary profession, we have three paramedics. Jeff, back here, he is a, he's in advanced, so he's, he's more than the EMT. He can't do as much as a medic. So when he's working, we, you know, will still be responding as an ALS, but he just won't be able to do as much as a medic. But, you know, we've got three medics that we can't run right now as a medic because, you know, we're, we only have one person. And like I say, once we upgrade the unit to a medic unit, then, you know, we provide the medicine.
Well, thank you both, chiefs. You've instilled a lot of confidence, so thank you.
Appreciate it, all of you. Other questions?
Any other questions?
So I anticipate that this is not going to be the first fire department that's gonna go hybrid. I, I do think it's quite possible for volunteers and paid work together. I do believe that just about every, anybody or everybody, when they call, they want the ambulance to go out right away, and this facilitates that. And this may be, you know, a little bit of an experiment, I'm not sure. But it looks like it's fair, from what I see, it looks fair for both counties. And after a year, of course, it can be reviewed. And I think it's a step in, in not just the right direction, the inevitable direction for this county. So I, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and. So I, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and, uh, approve this memorandum of agreement. Hopefully I don't have to read it.
Oh, hold second for motion.
Does this go to you by our attorney?
Uh, it has not.
We have a motion and a second, um, discussion?
Discussion, yeah. I, I think this thing runs for a year, so it really, really, if you wait for a year, we're, we're at the end of it. I think you should start the review process shortly before the year is up.
Before.
And, uh, this is exactly what I knew was going to happen, that, you know, it shows up on the agenda, and it's going to be approved, even though we don't know how it got negotiated. So...
I, I will, I'll speak to that. What I did is I took the agreement that Warren County adopted and put it in form for consideration by the board.
Who, who asked you to do that, though, sir?
Ms. Donahue asked for the agenda, it had to be on the agenda, which is her, her pleasure as a board member.
That's what I was pointing to earlier. I don't know if I articulated it, no one had the authority to go this far, neither you nor Ms. Donahue.
Well, we can talk about procedure at another time, but it is...
No, we're, we're talking about the law.
It is the...
We're talking about the law, Mr. Parrish, not procedure.
Right, but it's, it's, I understand it, it is a prerogative of the chairman, whoever the chairman is, to, uh, organize the, uh, agenda.
This is, this is not organized.
This, this is part of the agenda.
But this is not organized, this is, this is negotiating an agreement on behalf of the county when the rest of this board did not know about it, unless somehow y'all did. There, there's the big difference.
Mr. Fraser definitely open to the conversation about how you believe that should occur. I do know that in Warren County, because I watched on YouTube, they did something that I told Ms. Smith the other day that I thought was very interesting. They had a work session to discuss anything that they thought would, uh, go to a, a fairly large discussion with the board members and citizens. And then after that work session was done, and they had approved to put it on the agenda, um, it basically went on to the consent agenda, and they didn't even have to have a discussion in the boardroom. Um, I like that process, and if it's something that we can follow here in the future, I'd be happy to do that.
I think we need more discussion, not less.
Well, and I think if the chair wants to call a work session, you know, it's always at the pleasure of the chair to call. You're, you as the chair alone can call a, a meeting, uh, on your, on your own powers. So, I mean, I think certainly if you want to call work sessions and do legwork in advance of meetings, that's commendable, and I would always encourage that.
But we have a motion on the floor and a second. I'd like to roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Obey.
Mr. Fraser?
Obey.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I, myself. I greatly appreciate your time and your effort to take care of all the citizens at Chester Gap, no matter where the line is. And I really do feel like you're taking care of the citizens, and they can rely upon you to be there when, when you need them.
Could I ask a point of, of information while we're, before we finish this, a topic of discussion? Mr. Chief Brown had said it takes 20, 25 minutes to get to Chester Gap from Little Washington. I, I said, you, you mentioned it takes about 20 or 25 minutes to get from Little Washington to Chester Gap, if we were to run an ALS unit up there.
Yeah.
Do you have any idea how long it takes to get from here to Woodville?
From here to Woodville, I would say probably a good 15 minutes, 20 minutes.
At least, 15 to 20.
At least.
So, this is, this is the, the gripe that is coming back to me as a member of this board, we are singling out one community differently than every other community in the county. And that, that's a legitimate gripe, I think.
Our fire services agreement was...
How many citizens are in the town of Woodville?
I don't know, but they pay taxes.
I don't know either.
And I think the...
I can't, I can't answer a question for an area that I don't, I'm not familiar with.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I wasn't really looking at the number.
I know how many people are in Chester Gap and in the Flint Hill area. I can't, you know, I can't answer a question.
And the difference here is you have a, a relationship with your neighboring county. Anybody can have a relationship with a neighboring county. All right, thank you so very much.
Add to Chief Brown's comment, Mr. Fraser. One thing, you bring up a good question, but what I want you to refer to is, those chiefs of those counties, of those areas in that county, have the same opportunity to do what Chief Brown has presented to this county when COVID happened and everything. They know their situation, they know what's going on there. They have the same opportunity to come to you and say, we have these issues going on. They're not doing that. I can tell you as president of the association, there's a lot of areas in this county where we should be looking at something like this, but we have some that want to play this game of, I'm doing okay, we're doing okay here. Um, but, you're right, but it comes back to the chiefs of that respective district, area, and everything, to be standing here in front of y'all as well, is what Chief Brown was doing, as far as looking at, not only the Wakefield District. You've heard him multiple times here, saying they come out of the Wakefield District and everything. Um, but, but that's a good question, but it also falls back on the representatives for those areas as far as fire and rescue, to step up and tell you what their needs are. We're telling you what our needs are for the Wakefield District. We can't tell you the needs for, um, that area.
Well, I, I want to say too, Mr. Williams, that they, a lot of, in a lot of ways, we have heard those needs. We heard it from the chiefs, we heard it from the association, and the needs, as we understood them, were for paid staff in a centrally located place. And we also reviewed that at the Public Safety Committee, and this board agreed to move forward that way, and to fund it as well, and it's in our budget cycle.
And if you go back to those comments, you will also see in there, if I've been there, or Chief Brown's been there, we have stated that putting a chase vehicle at Washington would not truly serve the north end of the county, because we are so close to the hospital. There's no need for us waiting for, with a critical patient, for someone to come to Washington or Amosville. The only other thing I want to point out is, with this agreement here, and what we're looking at and everything, I have a feeling that this Board of Supervisors truly does not know what you're getting from the other side of the county line over the past couple years and everything. I mean, there, there's been some nasty calls, there have been structure fires and everything, that when they send resources across that county line to, to help us, they're leaving open the town of Front Royal and everything as well, and all, and they've been doing that for years, been doing it for years, and there's been no cost to us and everything. But it's time where we try to sit down and look at, and I know for a fact that a lot of other chiefs should be speaking up right now, as, as Chief Brown is doing.
Right, right.
But again, as far as the paid person and everything, um, coming here, yeah, we made that decision, but we don't know right now when it's going to happen. I mean, Washington's sitting right back here right now, getting ready to do some remodeling and everything. They don't have a timeframe when that's going to happen. We don't have a timeframe, so we're, we're going, we have to look out for ourselves, because when it comes to Chester Gap, when it comes to Chester Gap, and Wakefield District...
I brought this up, I brought the funding part of that up during our budget cycle, and I, I had no support on this board.
So, I, I can't...
We can't fund every one of those companies that have those problems you're talking about without having funds to do it. We couldn't have discussion about the funding, so.
Thank you. I'd like to do a five-minute recess if we can, I just need a break, thank you. And some more water.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to put forth the name of, uh, Mr. Jack Atkins' deposition. He's held it for a number of years, and, uh, I believe it would just be best if our, our new hire would, he's got so many things on his plate to, to work with, he could attend those meetings as a, you know, citizen member, but I think for, uh, continuity, we should probably just go ahead and reappoint Mr. Atkins.
Madam Chair, if that's a motion, I will second it.
All right, thank you very much. We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
I would just also echo the comments and thank Mr. Atkins for his many years of service on the council, and, uh, certainly the county's benefited on his watch, and I'm glad he's willing to continue to offer that service.
I, and I agree with that, and I think, um, Mr. Polster is definitely aware that he can attend those meetings whether he's on the, uh, board or not, so, on the council. All right, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now we're on to the appointment of Board of Building Appeals.
Are we giving Mr. Atkins a pay increase?
No. For the rent's appointment.
If you'll notice, on the appointments, the timeline says any time for the Board of Building Appeals, I believe, Mr. Racer?
Uh, yes, he stepped away. Actually, uh, Mr. Parrish put somebody to me and called me actually this morning, and I spoke to him and sent him information, and, uh, told him where to find an application, so hopefully your next meeting, you'll be able to fill that spot.
Yeah, I thought about him because he's the only, he, he applied for the position of the building inspector at one point, so I knew he was in that arena, so.
Wonderful. Um, no other discussion on that appointment, we'll go to three, which is Agriculture and Forestry District's Advisory Committee.
Yes, so that just needs a, a landowner, uh, doesn't have to be a landowner who's in agricultural, forestry, uh, business. Mr. Wallman resigned, and, because he said he'd be moving away from the county. No applications to this time, and I don't see any need to run a newspaper ad for this particular.
Well, we could refuse to accept his resignation. Send him a letter to that effect.
Moving along, appointments of the Rappahannock County Recreational Facility Authority?
Yeah, I just wanted to provide the board an update, uh, include a copy of the notice that ran in the newspaper, have received two applications from, um, current members seeking reappointment so far, but the notice identifies that applications aren't due to the end of June, with anticipation of appointment at the July meeting. So if you know anybody who may be interested in the recreational facilities authority, please send them my way. Uh, I did reach out to the, uh, gentleman, Mr. Forback, who expressed interest before, and let him know the timeline.
How many total, how many total vacancies?
Five.
Five.
Well, good work. Right. Five total, which could be reappointments or reappointments.
Okay.
Are there actually that many members required?
The size of the body is set by your local ordinance, and that mirrors the incorporation documents, so, uh, unless those documents were changed, I'd say yes.
Thank you. All right, moving into old business, um, number two, preliminary review, Mount Airy Field Incorporated.
Ms. Smith asked for this to be placed back on the agenda now that the Board of Supervisors has held your land use training, uh, session. The next step along the, the way for the board to consider is when to, uh, notice a public hearing. I spoke with the applicants during the break and asked them if they had any preference, and they said they are ready as soon as, as possible. Next opportunity, if that's the will of the board, of course, the next opportunity would be the July meeting, and we could set the proper notices in the paper by that time. The Board of Supervisors, of course, you're, uh, you can set it whenever you want, it must be, your action must be completed by October 28th, as noted in the agenda item, which is a year, 12 months after the application was filed.
Thank you, Mr. Curry, um, and I, I'll just make a motion as, as a way to tee off conversation, if I could get a second. I would move that we move the, uh, Mount Airy Field Incorporated rezoning request, uh, forward to a public hearing at the July meeting of the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors.
Hold second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Historic masonry and roofing evaluation.
I'm not sure, Mr. Fraser, if you intended for Mr. Walling to give Mr. Forrest, or...
I think he had worked up something, but, uh, might as well make a notice, hey.
Do we have anyone here on the line?
Randy's on there.
Should, should we, I don't mean to interrupt, but should we let the folks that are joining us virtually go first? Does that make sense, or should we?
Well, this, uh...
This is just a report, right?
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, I thought we were going to have Randy and company here, weren't we?
He's, I think, still...
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, they aren't here.
That was my only question.
Well, it's up to the board.
What do you want, guys?
Now we've gotten ourselves under quite a pickle.
You can do both, and, and Mr. Walling can sit right there.
Well, why don't Rand, Randy just pipe in, raise his hand and pipe in, all right? Uh, there's a little bit of background, uh, last building committee meeting, we got together, uh, and, well, actually the last two, and discussed your decision not to fund the brick and mortar, and we had asked the contractor to come back and look at different options to do it. Uh, I personally went after trying, trying to get some of their intellectual capital with spending less money. The bottom line is, they really didn't come back with much of a, much of a change to that. And so, we thought it would be best to kind of help you all understand the bigger picture that's going on with the building committee. So, uh, that's what this report is really about, all right? Next slide. Uh, first, these are the basic assumptions the building committee is, is working with. We must conserve the courthouse, treasurer, and commissioner revenue buildings. And the first step in that is protecting the envelopes, because it'll be a while before we can get to the inside of them. We must maintain court operations within the county, right? That means we can't just shut this building down for however long it takes to, if we were able to get it in here and, and, uh, refurbish this building for it to be the court. And we must address life and safety issues as they are discovered where possible. And Mr. Curry has done a vast majority of those already. There was a bunch in that original report that we had the joint meeting on that, uh, have already been addressed. Next slide. Uh, what we know, the existing functions in the courthouse, that's ones that are in this building alone, all right, require about twice as much space, floor space, as in this building, because of growth and current design standards, all right? Uh, there's significant water infiltration into the treasurer and commissioner revenue building. Uh, if you've been in the commissioner revenues, right behind the desk, you can see that the plaster that's applied directly to the, to the brick, which is also probably lime plaster, is peeling off. You talk to those ladies, and they're getting sand on the floor every time it rains, all right? Uh, if you look at the outside, particularly where the parging was, the mortar is missing, and there are many bricks where the glazing has been damaged, both where the parging was and in other locations. Uh, the building and zoning office, as you know, is, is unsafe, it's only got one exit. Uh, the clerk of the court and the Commonwealth attorney should be co-located with the courthouse, as done in other counties, for security reasons and others, all right? Previous repairs that have been done did not last long, and may have actually made some of the problems worse. Next slide. What we don't know are the best, best methods to preserve the masonry, both the techniques and the suppliers. So, your last one was, Mr. Parrish, you wanted us just to, to write a contract. That would be a lot of research and work by Mr. Curry to get that done. That's, because he's not a, a, um, masonry expert, and so, knowing what suppliers and what the actual techniques are, is a lot of research to get that procurement in place, and then there's risks. Other problems in the courthouse, treasurer, and commissioner revenue buildings that may not be revealed until renovation is underway. Anyone that's worked on, uh, an existing building, you open it up, and you're going to find all sorts of wonderful things, all right? And so you're going to have cost and schedule slips. The other thing is, what is the cost and schedule, uh, for a new courthouse, where the envelope preservation or remodeling, or the lifecycle costs? We really have no information on what this overall is going to cost. Next slide. In the big picture, there are four interrelated projects. You have continuing repairs, HVAC, I think you just had a problem at Scrabble, electrical, windows, woodwork, painting. Uh, and then the second one is designing and building a new courthouse, that's a big effort, and then preserving the envelopes of the courthouse, treasurer, and commissioner revenue buildings, both the roof, the masonry, the woodwork, and surrounding grounds. A lot of the problem with the water infiltration are the sidewalks that go right up to the side of the brick, and there's no place for the water to go, all right? Remodeling the courthouse, treasurer, and commissioner revenue... Remodeling the courthouse, treasurer, and commissioner revenue buildings. So as you can see, when you look at having to move people around, there's a whole lot of interrelated stuff, and something has to come before the other. So, for example, making the assumption there's a new courthouse, that has to be done before you can start space dominoes. But you can, could preserve, start preserving the exteriors, the envelopes, in advance. Then you get to relocating offices and functions and deciding on the county office space function locations, deciding which buildings and assets to retain. If, for example, we co-locate the Commonwealth attorney, we don't need to retain that building anymore. And the swing space for management during remodeling, assuming we're going to continue to use the two buildings next door while they're being restored, for however long that takes, they need to have a place to go, all right? And, for example, if we move the clerk of the court into the new courthouse, that becomes a big swing space opportunity, all right? All right, next slide, issues. Bottom line is, this is not going to be quick, cheap, or easy, all right? And risk management is critical to contain the cost. You know, I think people have mentioned what it costs Madison to do this, what, some eight, 10 years ago?
Fifteen.
Fifteen years ago, and it was $8 million or something like that?
Now, the low bid came in at 8.9 some odd million, and that was 50% over the projected cost by the architect.
Right. And at the last meeting, I asked, I just took the, I asked the architect what those courthouses normally go for. And if I remember right, it was $350 to $500 a square foot. You do that by the space requirements for the courthouse, and that is a large number, all right? The needed expertise for masonry and many other things are not available organically. And thank you very much for getting those contracts that we're using that Gary administers. Another big issue is the bond market. When do the existing bonds expire? And what is the future cost of money? After we go through some inflation or whatever, that could, the cost of money could be a real added burden to this. So scheduling all that and figuring out when all those things are going to play and what you're going to fund is going to be some very hard financial decisions. And through all of this, public acceptance is going to be essential. Public is very emotionally tied to these buildings, and we have to be very careful about what they feel we should be doing, and of course, the potential tax implications of it. And the last big point is Mr. Curry's and the staff's workload. This is not a small procurement item or a small number of procurement items. It's going to take a lot of work to do this. So putting that in the proper priority in his workload is going to be a critical thing for you all to keep up with. Any questions?
Mr. Vaughn is on the Zoom, and I'm muted, so he can answer a question for the board or interject now if he has anything to add.
Mr. Vaughn, this is Kier Witsen. I was caught off guard with the price on the masonry inspection and planning contract. And it sounds like you've come in with a revised scope of work and a lower cost for that that part of this initial inspection activity. Could you just talk about how the scope changed and the difference in the cost from what was proposed previously?
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, great. I'm in my automobile, so hopefully you can hear me fine. So yeah, I just, I know we had talked about the various components. So what was just covered is within the scope of the project that we currently are doing, which is the assessing the needs and determining, you know, how large a building we would be eating at, the conceptual layout and thinking that goes into what and how much, and how all these things are going to play together and move people around, those types of things. So within that initial scope of work that we had proposed to the county and is under contract to be done, that is all being taken care of. One of the things that we had talked about outside of that scope of work was this evaluation phase of the existing historic buildings there. And in that, because as you mentioned, there is water infiltration through the masonry that so we have come back to you with a recommendation to go to a specialist in this field who is at a firm where we have asked for proposal and have worked with several other projects. John Milner, associate, is a, you know, recognized expert in the field of historic preservation. Again, these buildings are built, the courthouse and the two small clerks' buildings, all to the left as you're standing facing the building, all date back to that original 1830s era. And they were built of different materials than we built masonry front day. So it's really important to have somewhat of that expertise to come in and really take, do the proper testing, do the proper evaluation of it, and advise us on how to proceed to stabilize and make sure that masonry is stable and ready to give you many more years of service. So the original proposal that we had submitted to the county for John Milner Associates, who would be a subconsultant to Wyman Wilson on this contract, was somewhere around $47,000 or so worth of work to be done. And that was not approved by the board at that time. And so we were asked to come back and what we could do to reduce the scope or adjust that scope number down. I talked back to John Milner Associates, my contacts there. Unfortunately, Amanda Edwards was to be on this call today. She had four block of phone calls. So she's not participating right now, but I hopefully can answer any questions that you may have on the particulars of what they are proposing. But we had originally come in and suggested that we do an evaluation of all of the masonry work, which I think is the more critical component, but also all the woodwork on the building, which would include these, the overhang, wood trim, the windows, would all be part of that initial study. That's something that we could defer that work to, and I would feel more comfortable about that. But I really feel the masonry is more critical of those who I have. So that brought, in fact, asked about deleting the evaluation of the woodwork. That reduced it down approximately $12,500, so we're at about $34,800 just to do the masonry evaluation. Now, there is a separate component of that, which is the roofing, the metal roofing evaluation, which we are, have already begun that work. That work has been authorized. So what we're looking at now is doing the masonry work. So does that kind of answer your question?
So, yeah, so it sounds like we dropped about $16,000 in costs, right?
The, and the roof work is separate now, and we already executed that work. And they were actually out earlier this week doing those inspections. So I don't want to double count anything, so that is already approved. And it's the wood that was pulled down. And I have 31.6 in my document. I don't, is that not right?
That's correct, yeah, 31.6.
And it was 47. And so I guess all I was trying to get is, what are we, what are we losing with the reduction by?
Everything having to do with wood.
Okay.
That's right.
Yeah, it wasn't like the price of it even changed. It was just taking something out of the square.
I suggested maybe get rid of the drone, and when he went back to check it, it was not, it didn't make sense.
Yeah. Okay.
It was only a thousand dollars of that. The only other recommendation or suggestion they made was to, that they could drop the testing of the mortar, which the mortar is most likely some kind of blind fixture. And you do not want to use modern mortar with those older mortars, because they don't have the same properties, and they act differently and could actually damage the brick if you use the wrong mortar. So that was a $25,000 reduction for that, to take that out, which would be off of this 33 or 31.6 that Gary had just mentioned. It still needs to be done at some point in time, but it would be deferred, possibly having the contractor do it. The reason you wouldn't want to do that is, again, it just, you know, put more risk on the contractor. When he goes to bids in Chicago, if he has to forget what the mortar is, rather than knowing what the mortar is.
Thanks.
If I could, Madam Chair, for the sake of point of information, anything that we remove from the original contract that looks like a savings actually has significant risk, which could be a larger cost down the road, either in the, either in the bidding stage or actually the design stage. So I don't think $16,000 is significant enough to, you know, to weigh the risk for what that's worth.
Thank you.
But if, thank you, Mr. Fraser. So if it's really leaving out the wood part of the original proposal, we could at least tackle the brick and mortar now, right? And then come back to what's been left out of this contract, or you just, it sounds like you prefer just to keep it the way it was?
The trouble is, if they have to come back, it's probably going to be more expensive.
And it can always, the wood can be dealt with too, on a piecemeal basis if things are discovered in the course of doing other work. But the cost is still there. It's just not part of the proposal.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate all your doing and.
I feel much more comfortable with county staff or local contractors, local knowledge tackling wood issues. Not a lot of confidence in local staff and local contractors tackling masonry issue. It's just, wood is wood. Old wood's usually better wood. But masonry is a whole different ballgame.
Chris, what do you think?
Well, no, I have to agree with that, and masonry is complicated, and local people can deal with the wood, and so.
I think you and I were both concerned just about the cost of them.
Yeah, seems like a lot, but like.
Pretty more comfortable with those.
Randy said it is expensive.
Yeah.
It looks like we're looking for a motion to approve the masonry evaluation in the amount of 31.633.
Yes, ma'am. And I believe that the building committee made the formal recommendation to that end.
I'll make that motion.
All right, motion made by Ms. Smith.
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Witsen is second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Randy, thank you for handling this.
Okay.
Hey, Mr. Vaughn.
I'll be in touch.
All right, we'll be in touch. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If I could make a suggestion, maybe we should switch to item H1, new business. At this time, Ms. Chandler's been very patiently waiting for us to work through our agenda. And I think the other two items that are next are more for conversation amongst the board members.
Sure, I'll second that.
All right. Ms. Chandler.
Oh, we have the vote from the other voter.
Sorry. For a move of the Electoral Board request for information to the next item and to put four and five down after this. Mr. Witsen, did you make that motion?
Yeah.
All right.
That's your motion.
Ms. Smith, here's time. Mr. Witsen is second. Yeah, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Ms. Chandler.
First, excuse me. First, I'm a bit amazed that a letter that the Electoral Board wrote to Mr. Curry, May 10, 2021, requesting explanation of the arbitrary $75,000 proposed salary for the Director of Elections is being presented at a Board of Supervisors meeting for your consideration. Without the Electoral Board being notified or even asked to speak, professional courtesy would demand that our office be notified and engaged. As an election official for more than 15 years and an Electoral Board member selected by the political committees and appointed by the Circuit Court judges, I take my role and what I do, my office, and the elections very seriously. I feel that the Board of Supervisors has dismissed the Electoral Board, my position, those of my Electoral Board colleagues, and those of the registrar's office as though we were second-class citizens involved in a hobby. The Electoral Board is as important to the proper running of our country as yours are to the county. And I take offense with your dismissive attitude towards our oath, training, knowledge, hard labor while serving your constituents. If it were not for the excellent workings of our nonpartisan office and bipartisan Electoral Board, none of you would be sitting here in your seats today, something you have very conveniently forgotten. And the Director of Elections is not a part-time, know-nothing job for a board housewife, retiree, or grandmother, as has been commented by at least one of you. What I have noticed, too, is that the majority of you don't appear to listen, except for right now, to what my Electoral Board presents at any of the countless meetings in which we have participated, whether it is the results from the two statewide studies ordered by the General Assembly for the sole purpose of studying the current increased workload of Virginia registrars or information about the Baker-Tilly Study. And the completion of which you made, and the completion of the Baker-Tilly Study, which you made a caveat for considering increasing the salary for the Director of Elections or any other matter presented, it seems that it falls on deaf ears. I request that you listen to what I'm going to say. The reason the Electoral Board wrote Mr. Curry was to request he explain the registrar's compensation in writing because he continues to change the rules. The Electoral Board would also note that the information presented to the Board of Supervisors by the county administrator regarding that of the registrar's office and the Director of Elections' value is greatly flawed. In his 2019 email to our office, Mr. Curry clearly stated the reason he couldn't pay the registrar equal to the treasurer in accordance with the Virginia General Assembly's studies and law, stating that the registrar's duties, complexity, and workload is similar to that of the locality treasurers, and registrar should be paid equally to the treasurers, was because the state did not provide the same reimbursement as that received for the treasurer. That was his email to our office. That reasoning no longer applies. In the approved Virginia fiscal year 2022 budget, the Commonwealth appropriated an additional $3.5 million to Virginia localities specifically to increase registrar compensation on par with locality treasurers and for the Commonwealth to fund it. Then, in a response to an email sent to you, the Board of Supervisors, April 1, 2021, Mr. Curry stated, and I'll quote, "The big question," in parentheses, "yes." Mr. Curry stated, and I'll quote, "The big question," in parentheses, "guess, is that nobody seems to have an estimate for what percentage of the salary scale we will get for the Registrar in fiscal year 2022. For comparison, I expect, I expect to receive about $73,000 for the Treasurer's office from the Comp Board for salary infringes in fiscal year 2021," end quote. Please note the word "expect," that expected reimbursement was from the state, was for three positions in the Treasurer's Department. Simple subtraction means the county supplements funds well over $100,000 for the Treasurer's Department's salaries, including fully funding the majority of the compensation and fringe benefits for the two staff members in that office. So it's okay to guesstimate the expected amount from the state for the Treasurer's office, but it's not for the Registrars. Even from before the March 10th presentation, Mr. Curry arbitrarily set the Director of Elections salary at $75,000. He also stated during a budget work session that he didn't give the Registrar top dollar." Again, that's a quote. Then, in the personal email threads of his discussions with the Board of Supervisors regarding the topic, he repeatedly tells you, the Board of Supervisors, that the arbitrary amount of $75,000 is an appropriate salary for our employee, for the Electoral Board's employee. Mr. Curry said he expects to see 73% from the Commonwealth returned to Rappahannock County for the Registrar and the Electoral Board's compensation, upon which Mr. Curry based his proposed arbitrary salary for our employee. In fact, in a document issued by the Department of Elections, the fiscal 2022 reimbursement for the Registrar alone is $61,498 out of a total required $67,619, the same as that of the Treasurer, a total reimbursement of 88.27%, plus there's an additional $4,577 reimbursement for the Electoral Board. Now, I'm going to be submitting proof to you, right here, that the re, the actual reimbursement, uh, for the county will receive for the Registrar is the 88.27%. Then, Mr. Curry compared the Rappahannock Registrar's proposed salary for 2022 with salary numbers surrounding counties from 2021. One's for 2022, an increase, and ones, and the others are from 2021. That is like not comparing like to like, and if anything, it's deceitful in presentation. So it appeared she was being paid much more than other Registrars. Furthermore, the Director of Elections doesn't work for other counties. She works for hours and has for nine years now under Electoral Board supervision. If what other counties pay people is a considering fact, why does the County Administrator, Clerk of Court, Treasurer, Commissioner of Revenue, just to name a few, have salaries considerably higher than those same positions in surrounding counties with three and five times our population? For example, right? Mr. Curry's salary is well above surrounding more populated counties like Page and Warren County. Mr. Curry's $148,000-plus salary versus Page County's at $120,000? And he keeps complaining that we're a small county, but yet other people can get paid more money and the Registrar less. Why is it only that the Registrar's office has been consistently attacked, held to standards that no other county position is held to, and denied fair compensation? This is even in the face of excellent and exceptional annual performance reviews, evaluations, achieved professional certifications, and exemplary service to our voters, which are all standards by which most public and private entities determine compensation increases. When I asked Mr. Whitson, in a very nice phone call, by the way, what would happen to the surplus funds the county will receive as reimbursement from the state specifically for the Registrar salary if it wasn't paid to the Registrar, he indicated it would be returned to the general funds account for the county. Please tell me why? If the Commonwealth has passed a law requiring parity compensation for the Registrar and the Treasurer, and the state is sending a significant amount of additional funding to the county, why would this money be diverted to the general fund and not be used for its intended purposes? And why would the Board of Supervisors agree with the County Administrator to arbitrarily cut the Director of Elections supplement they've been paying her for the last two years, when there's no rationale behind it? No other Rappahannock County office has had, argued for their compensation, and no other office has ever had a reduction in the county supplement to their employees, not even when newly elected? I'm closing. I, I know you're ready for me to close. Mr. Curry has been in our office twice during his tenure to see about a mold issue that was actually left unresolved for two years. He has never spent time seeing the day-to-day complex workings of the Registrar's office, nor have any of you seen the incredible amount of work it takes to ensure you can all be elected again. And if you recall, I personally invited all of you at the January Board of Supervisors meeting to please come and see what we do. I'm certain none of you know that for this election alone, the Registrar will have worked 11 straight days, including being in the office, opening the office, serving voters, this Saturday, this Sunday, 11 straight days, and yet Mr. Curry repeatedly states the Registrar is not worth what the law, the law clearly states and what the county pays the Treasurer. Now that the Commonwealth has come through with the additional funds and the language attached to this stating, and I quote, "The annual salaries for general registrars shall be adjusted to equal salaries for local Treasurers," end quote, there is no longer any reason for the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors to deny equal compensation. All such reasons have been resolved. The Electoral Board is demanding the equal reimbursement for the Registrar as the Treasurer in accordance with the state budget new laws, the 2019 state study the Board of Supervisors hung its hat on in the fiscal year 20, um, 20 budget discussions, and Mr. Curry's own 2019 email wherein he outlined his standard for calculating the salary of the Registrar. Due to the increase in state reimbursement to the county, it will not cost the county any more money complying with the law, and more importantly, our employee has more than earned it. The Electoral Board asks that this board finally acknowledges the value and contributions of our department and amend the compensation for the Registrar and Electoral Board members as dictated by Virginia law. The budget is wrong and the numbers are incorrect. We further request, moving forward, that the Electoral Board be contacted, informed, and given the opportunity to participate in any and all proposed budgets for our department and election-related agenda items, and afford us the respect our contributions deserve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, uh, Denise, Mr. Klaus was in here, you know, and we were going through the budget process. And we assured him that were more money coming from the state, it would be passed directly to the Registrar, in that stance. Uh, and that was our stance at the time, and that still is. And, uh, when the money comes in from the state, it's going to go directly into her salary.
Chris, if that does, I, my hat's off to you because.
No, we, we promised that to Mr. Klaus when he was here. He negotiated for her during our budget process. He was here every time. And that's the case, and that's the situation.
Okay.
And, and this is not, you know, the Registrar vis-à-vis Mr. Curry's job. I mean, it's, it's not.
I, I understand, but the.
It's not fair for you to criticize him for doing his job.
Everything, everything.
Right. And, uh, so that's the situation. It's, 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 uh, I think we all agree that when the money comes in from the state, it's going to go directly to the Registrar. We all agreed on that.
Okay.
And that's going, that's the case.
Okay. And then I, and I say thank you to you, but I still had to say what I had to say.
Okay.
And I appreciate if all of you would give the due that the Electoral Board deserves to give us credit, okay?
I would just like to say that I, I don't like the ranker between the two bodies, and I don't think it's productive. I certainly don't have it on my end, and I hope you don't perceive it from me. But I would like to say that when we were working through the budget, because I felt like there was so much back and forth between the Electoral Board and the Board of Supervisors, and it was in an unproductive way, it was actually my suggestion that we have the Electoral Board members, uh, attend some of the work sessions so that we could discuss these things together. And I hope you understand that, Denise, and I, I certainly don't hold any of the Electoral Board members and, and any, but, anything but esteem for the service that they provide, and I commend, uh, the Registrar for the service she provides as well.
And I thank you for that too. And again, we just would like to be part of any workshop going on and not just find out after the fact.
Well, I think we did it at the time, but we also always put out, I believe, a blanket statement at the beginning of the budget cycle that if any of the stakeholders feel like they need to address the board, they can identify that upfront and, uh, reserve a time on our agenda so that we can have that discussion together.
Okay, and going forward, we will make sure that we do.
That sounds great.
Okay, and I thank you all, and thank you for your service.
Yeah, and I, I appreciate your remarks, and, I mean, I, I have tried to listen, and I did try to work off of some empirical data, and for certain, the locality data from surrounding areas was presented to us, and I thought that that was, uh.
I know. Twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-one.
But that was pointed out at the time, when, when that was presented, that was, that was explained.
Right, we do understand that there are, there are changes afoot.
But I, I just want to say that I, first of all, I respect Ms. McCurnan a lot, and I interacted with her a lot in 2019, and she and her colleague were fantastic, so don't ever think twice about that. Second, I appreciate your dedication and your level of advocacy. And again, I really tried hard to look at the proposed salary in a broader context and to work as objectively as possible to see where that salary fit in, in the continuum of salaries. And I will note, um, this is not so much a, a Registrar question as a Treasurer question, but our Treasurer, our Treasurer in fact performs dual duty, and, and I think she's compensated for that in the sense that she's serving not only her constitutional role, but she's also frankly doing a lot more from a county finance standpoint that would cost us additional money if we had to hire a finance person. So, um, I appreciate everything Ms. McCurnan does. I also appreciate what our other county employees and constitutional officers do, and I really did try to kind of keep it all, all in mind in, in looking at this, this compensation question.
And we appreciate it, and, but the law is the law, and we would, you know, I appreciate what Chris said, and that'll be passed on to her.
Well, correct.
We'll make sure that we speak to you before the next budget season begins.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, back up into old business. I believe we're on four ordinance amendment, motions, rules, and procedure for Board of Supervisors.
Uh, this was, uh, worked on by the Rules Committee, Madam Chair, and I guess this is initiated by myself, and it came before the board, and we went back and worked on it two or three different times. But I think we finally got it in a form that we, we can actually use. It's, uh, similar, but not exactly like Robert's Rules of Order. But it just makes, I think, the, uh, working of, of motions and motions to postpone or motions to table much more workable under this than what we currently have.
All right.
I believe it's been properly advertised, it's been before the board in numerous, you know, numerous times now, so.
Yeah, so just to clarify, the board held a public hearing at your last meeting to, uh, consider changes to this section of the ordinance, um, after hearing from the public, which I recall was from the people. Uh, during your discussion, uh, board thought that perhaps a couple of words could be inserted into the definition, and Mr. Goff and I, uh, inserted a few words, and the Rules Committee reviewed those and had recommended them for approval by the board. The revised wording is similar enough to what was provided initially for public hearing, and so Mr. Goff and I believe it's appropriate for the board to adopt this ordinance now. If you would like, both are provided with attachments to this agenda item. Uh, one of them probably is updated, which I'm placing on the screen.
So I could, I could put forth this as a motion that we would, uh, adopt the resolution as proposed in our agenda item.
It's an ordinance.
All right. All right, Mr. Fraser made the motion, Ms. Smith seconded.
Just to be clear, this is the updated version that you're moving forward, that I displayed. Of two versions.
Any, any further discussion? Hearing none, it looks like we need a roll call vote. I'm stalling for a little bit of time, so Mr. Whitson can come back. We'll start with Mr. Fraser.
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also. Thank you for that, um.
So, Mr. Whitson going to vote on this ordinance?
I won't vote. I'm abstaining.
He'll abstain, yeah.
Yeah, I apologize while I'm here.
Yes. All right, and now we're into the, um, ordinance amendment, chapter 22. Further review, ordinance amendment to chapter 22, Article 7, tax exemptions for members.
Board members will, will recall, this topic's been on your agenda a number of times. Originally, it was intended by myself and the Treasurer to streamline the ordinance just a little bit relative to the timing of when applications from the fire chiefs, certifications from the fire chiefs need to be submitted, and the process through which those certifications would be accredited to members' personal property tax accounts, whether they have to go back to the member and be resubmitted in the form of voucher, or could just go straight over to the Treasurer's office, so it could be shown as a credit on the member's, um, tax bill. Through all the discussion, uh, there was discussion with Mr. Fraser brought up, the model that is used in many localities, actually was partially included in our ordinance, whereby one vehicle for volunteers and auxiliary members are classified separately for purposes of taxation for, um, personal property, and if it's classified separately, the board can assign a different tax rate. Could be zero, could be any number less than the, what is applied to all other members. So at your last meeting, the board came to consensus and took a vote and requested an ordinance be prepared that, um, would put into effect the language that would create separate classifications. Fortunately, Mr. Goff has not had a chance to review these. They're here for your discussion. If this is the path that you want to move forward, one possible path forward would be to authorize me to advertise a public hearing after reviewed and found acceptable by the county attorney. Otherwise, this would have to push off another month, which we're far enough into the annual cycle that there's really no way to get this in for this year anyway, so, um, I'll follow the board's lead.
I would make a motion that, uh, we ask you to advertise it for a public hearing at the next, uh, July meeting of the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors after reviewed by the county attorney.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second by Mr. Whitson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. All right. Moving into new business, request from local Board of Social Services to increase the number of seats on that board. the number of seats on that board.
And Ms. Gail Cricks is here, the director of DSS. She submitted a letter to the board expressing an interest from the local social services board to increase the size of that board. I'll allow Mr. Cricks to give you a quick intro and see how the board wants to handle this.
Good evening, board members. Yes, the advisory, the administrative board had discussed it a prior meeting and then took a vote at its last meeting to request the board of supervisors to consider revising county code to expand the seat of the local administrative board from its current three seats to five seats. This is primarily based upon the fact that with the three-seat board, it being a public entity, any interaction, either intentional or unintentional, if they meet outside of two members constitutes a public meeting and then is subject to FOIA and all requirements that go along with a public meeting. So, that greatly inhibits their ability to maybe discuss some things after the fact, or even just casual meetings, they have to be on guard about that. And then also, the second element of it was they felt an expanded board would allow for broader representation of the county interest and facilitate good discussion, especially if one board member wasn't available. That kind of left the two, two board members sort of talking about issues that might affect a great segment of the population. And so, based on those two reasons, they're requesting your consideration of an expansion of the board to five seats. And I'd be happy to ask, answer any additional questions that may be related to this request.
I noted in the agenda item, to do that, it would be a local ordinance modification. So, to do that, you must hold a public hearing for consideration of such ordinance modification. It would literally be changing the word three to five. I didn't go ahead and write that draft, but if that, if the board want to hear the public's input on that and consider amending that ordinance, that can be done in July.
Will this make your life easier?
Yeah. I love it, that's what she said.
There are, it would, it would allow for broader representation in the county, and it's really not about my, I mean, that's a loaded question if there ever was one, but I appreciate the broad perspectives that a multi-member brings, and so having really good discussion generally always ends up in a better outcome in the end, so I, I support their request, and I had no reservations about it.
And then when you say broad representation, what do you mean by that? Just, just more people, or are you, are you talking about geographic representation, or?
Well, it would depend on how the board wanted to constitute those five seats. Some localities do, do it by voting district. That's not part of code. It's nothing you have to write into code, it can just happen organically that way.
No.
But Jim, and when you have more than three people in a room, you're going to have multiple perspectives, life experiences that can, you know, just lend additional dialogue and help, helpful discussion.
Cool. I, I did lay out in the agenda, the chair, that I felt that, I feel, would be valuable if a board member or supervisor's member served on this local social services board, and the Code of Virginia reads that that is the default position unless the local board thinks it's not, not necessary. It's a large part of your budget, and it's a very critical human service area and service delivery to the community. But you don't have to, and that wouldn't have to be part of the ordinance. It's always optional on behalf.
But the first step is to vote to advertise to amend the county code.
Good.
I'll second that. Was that a motion?
Me?
Yeah.
Well, I can, but I didn't have anything prepared. It has to sound intelligent, I don't have it down here.
I think what you said was fine, authorize the staff to advertise an ordinance amendment, public hearing.
Yeah.
That sounds good.
I'll, I'll second it.
All right, Mr. Frazier and Mr. Parrish, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Just, and that's in July, just to be clear.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Appreciate your time.
How's your job so far?
E-summons fund ordinance amendment request.
This, this item was brought forward by the sheriff. She's requesting the board to amend the ordinance to add a section that would levy a five-dollar fee to certain court cases. Those funds would be accounted for separately, much like much is done with the courthouse security fee and that concealed weapons fee. And if held separately, they can be used for technology purposes for the sheriff's office specifically to help her with an e-summons program, which would allow her to issue summonings on the side of the road. She's, right now, trying to work on developing a mobile data terminal program so that those compares can be in each one of the patrol cars. This would help fund that over into the future, and Mr. Goff did review this information, which was borrowed from some other book out.
Do we have a ballpark of how much revenue this would generate?
The courthouse security fee, I would hit the, I don't have that number off the top of my head.
Obviously, y'all think it's significant enough to amend the ordinance?
Yes.
I mean, if, if the sheriff recommends it, I, I think we should do it.
I did note in the, in the information here that Mr. Goff did check with the two clerks to make sure there wasn't any issue with the process through which the collection would have to happen. They both said it's, they basically had to have their software update about state. It's a standard process, and it wouldn't be an issue.
And there's no prohibitive costs associated with it?
To help the deputies in their cars, I think this makes very good sense.
Well, I think then I'll make that motion, that we go ahead and move this forward.
Second.
So, this, so the people, the person paying the five dollars is the one that got the ticket, right?
That, that is correct, and that's for...
It's like an addition to court costs.
It is a court cost. It's in your fee section in the same area of the code as the courthouse security fee that's applied, which I believe is a dollar, two dollars or something.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
I was just trying to get two different bits of work of the planning commission finalized and get it before this board finalized in the form of our county code. And then one would be the shore tower, the eighty-foot exemption for the, to, you know, help distribute broadband across the county, and the other would be the solar, what is it, how's it read? Solar scale, utility scale solar installations. That's, that's probably the proper way to say it, the way it's written. So, that, I just think that we need to have these things dealt with in a timely manner, and I think a joint meeting would be the way to do it. Properly advertised, both bodies.
There's drafts have, I had prepared a draft of the shore tower information for the board. The board sent it to the planning commission, and the, and the planning commission has recommended this course of action. Mr. Conick, I believe, during his time on the planning commission drafted up some draft ordinance amendment language for the solar, and that is considered by the planning commission. And at the last, the planning commission's last meeting, I asked that staff have time to review that before go to public hearing, and that led to this timeline being recommended as the fastest possible track that I, that we felt comfortable with moving. I'm hopeful that we can still keep to this schedule, and Mr. Goff has some personal matters to tend to, but I'm attempting to work with outside experts as well.
Mr. Frazier, if that's a motion, I'll, I'll gladly second.
That is a motion, sir, thank you.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Do we have a date for this? I just want to make sure.
July seventh is, would be the joint public hearing. Everything backs up off of that. Because that July seventh meeting is a Wednesday, the calendar lines up to allow the proper newspaper advertisements in the two preceding weeks, which is just that deadline, or happens just after the planning commission meeting, so everything fits just in to allow us to slide in with no room for error.
So, we're going to do these two?
Lot of public hearings.
And mountain area on one night.
Okay. More water and snacks, I think. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. We are moving into information reports and correspondence, board committee reports. We have building committee.
I'll, I'll go ahead and take building committee real, real quick. You saw the fruit of our labors from the last meeting, the proposal, the, not proposal, but the presentation put on by Mr. Lenny. It was his work, but it was the result of our last meeting, and, and we're, we're trying to get some of this work caught up on, get it, get it, get it going. As you had Mr. Curry inform you, he has been able to get the roof work started, the evaluations for, for the metal roofs, and, and we discussed further the proposed courthouse that we will be hoping to, you know, get all that information together so this board could review it and, and have their input on it. So, we, we have several balls in the air. We're trying to keep them all up and move in at one time. Any questions?
Hearing none, thank you very much for your efforts, and we'll move into the recreational facilities authority.
We did meet this past month at the rec center itself, and just conducted normal business. There does seem to be a lot of talk about the use of the tennis courts by other sports, so if you catch wind of that, just be aware that there is ongoing debate about the use of the tennis courts by pickleball players, and it's quite...
A pickleball invasion.
To which I, I suggest, and I hope my board members agree, that the best way forward is for tennis players and pickleball players to learn to talk to each other and find a common way forward. So, thank you. If you have any other thoughts about Hannah, how to handle that, please let me know.
The one thing I would add is that the lumber for the fence was ordered in his own account of the delivery, it was three weeks.
Early July.
Three or four weeks, so pushing end of June, early July.
Thank you for that reminder, Mr. Curry. Yes, so we'll be looking for any and all volunteers to help with installation in early July.
Carisac money, can we build a pickleball court?
Don't, don't, yeah, you know, fools rush in, we're angels feel the spirit of tread. That's all I'm going to say about tennis courts versus pickleballs.
Then we move into public safety committee.
Oh, we did not meet. I planned to call a meeting at the end of this month. Since we've hired, have our new hire on board, it seemed appropriate to wait for him.
Rules committee?
We met, and you've seen the fruits of our labor.
Thanks for all you do.
Thank you very much. Planning commission update.
Very quickly, Mr. Frazier summarized well the, I think it was a good idea, and I appreciate it. Attending the planning commission meeting, I was out of town, but then participated via Zoom, so we'll have that joint, that joint public hearing coming up, and then we had a custom sawmill application that took some time to work out, and then separately, in Ms. Smith's district, this proposed brewery on two-eleven also took some, took some time to talk through, and that's been scheduled for a public hearing. But it was quite a lengthy planning commission meeting, I think four hours.
Wow. Thank you for that. Fire levy board has not met, but they are, we are meeting in July. I can't find that date on my phone, but...
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth, thank you. July thirteenth. More to follow in August, I guess. Okay, so we've done that, chair's report, anything?
Just to remind that the first half of the ARPA money is in our bank and throws cash grab, all hell's just got through. Time for the board to start thinking about how this money would be invested. She talked about it once already.
Do we need to have a separate?
At some point in time, that probably makes sense. We need to dig into the details and what you can and can't do, and if there are some high points that the board wants to look into. Be good to come.
Madam Chair, if I could, I see Mr. Mitchell here, and, and I think that since we have probably a lengthy closed session, we may have to work with, could we maybe move the, the last of the information report correspondence items and matters presented by the board till after the public hearing tonight? Would that be acceptable?
I am open to that suggestion.
Is there, is there any other discussion needed on any of the information reports or correspondence?
No.
The, the one important thing in that is the reassessment process timeline.
Yep.
And there is a decision point for the board in that, and maybe a future meeting on whether to change the dates for the BOE. That's something, probably should be its own agenda item.
I wondered if we should have Ms. Graham come discuss that with us in general and work through that with us as well.
Makes sense to me, we put that, just move it to next month, okay? All right, I think we can go.
Can I extend that order to be after the public hearing?
If we could, then we, then maybe we could cycle back to some of those reports if we have to, but I was just thinking to expedite some of this mid-afternoon stuff.
Maybe, maybe matters presented by the board should be after new business this evening, because otherwise, it'll be before public comments this evening.
Whatever you think's best. I was just thinking about that.
All right, so we're going into closed...
Is that a motion to amend the agenda?
Yeah, oh.
Grace, which way do you want it amended?
I would make it Q four, because I didn't want members of the public reading through board discussion.
You said P four?
Q four, please.
All right.
I just want to make, so we're, you're moving...
Board discussion.
Matters presented by the board, J one.
Anything that would be left on the reports that may have been of interest to, I mean, because we might, somebody between now and then might think of something we'd like to discuss. I think it should be open for that again, not anything we've already discussed, but something that we're...
All right, so that was a motion by Ms. Smith. Mr. Frazier, did you a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, good suggestions. All right, closed meeting. Sir, we are going to go into closed meeting. Do I need to read some?
Give me a second to catch up.
Okay. Okay. Have a motion to go into closed meeting?
I move that the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors conduct a closed meeting in accordance with two-point-two dash thirty-seven eleven A from the Code of Virginia for the purpose of, one, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body. That's two-point-two dash thirty-seven eleven A one. Consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of a public body. That's two-point-two dash thirty-seven eleven A seven. Consultation with legal counsel, employed or retained, this is number three, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. That's two-point-two dash thirty-seven eleven A eight. The subject of the closed meeting will be, number one, corresponding to one above, performance of a board appointee.
Let me interrupt you one second, I'm so sorry. Due to the fact that Mr. Goff is not here, I'd like to postpone number two.
Okay, then I'll...
That's, I think, the first one, still correct?
Yep, everything's up.
Okay. I'm not sure, I guess then I'll amend what I'm making on the fly to exclude two.
Yes, ma'am.
And then just add item three, which corresponds to the third item, which I read above, consultation with legal counsel regarding case number CL twenty-dash-seventy-five. which I read above, consultation with legal counsel regarding case number CL 20-75. Is that clear for the record, Mr. Curry?
Yes, so basically, you read the motion as provided in the packet, just excluding the subject matter for number two.
Yes, strike number two.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second, it's a roll call vote.
No, yes.
No?
Yes, rule.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith? I mean, Ms. Smith, sorry.
Aye.
Mr. Frazier?
Mr. Smith.
It was a very good movie.
Yeah, it was. Mr. Parrish?
Forgiven.
And I also. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.